The meeting of the Marshall City Council is ordered with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We have a full agenda this evening and we'll move through that agenda as best we can. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, we'll move then to Agenda Item Number Three, which is to consider the approval of the minutes of the work session and the regular city council meeting. Both were held on May 8th. The council does have the minutes of both of those meetings. Are there any corrections?
Move on.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Agenda Item Number Four. Agenda Item Number Four is the first of six public hearings that we're going to have this evening, so I'll say just a little bit about the public hearing. They'll all be conducted in the same manner in that we'll introduce the public hearing. I will ask either the city administrator or someone else to conduct the public hearing. There'll be a brief discussion or presentation of the topic that is of that public hearing. And again, we have multiple public hearings this evening. Following that brief presentation of the topic, then we'll open it up for public comment. When we do the public comment, I'd ask a couple of things, either from the council or for members of the audience. Members of the audience will need to come up and use the microphone and then speak clearly into the microphone because the reason for that is that this is aired on public access live television. When you do that, you know, give your name, give your address, which, because we have a lot of people, we try to limit the length of the comments to maybe three minutes. So if you have more that you have to say, that's fine, but we'll kind of shoot for that three-minute target. And then I'd like to give everybody the opportunity to speak before we have repetition. And people speak more than once, so. So with that, the first agenda item then is this public hearing, and we have the topic on the screen. This is a public hearing on the project plan for the proposed project area number five, which is the project area, and the tax increment financing plan for the proposed tax increment financing housing District Five dash one, a housing development district within the project area. And we have a resolution that would then establish that tax increment finance District Five dash one. So I will call on first Sharon Hansen to provide any additional introduction, and then we will have a brief presentation about all of those aspects of this agenda item. So Sharon?
Mr. Mayor, the agenda item is for the public hearing to be conducted, and then a consideration of the enabling resolution, which was included in your packet, and it's a part of the paperless system. The EDA has requested two presenters to provide information on the TIF project area in TIF District. Tara Anken, our EDA Director, and then also Michaela Hewitt, who's with Springstead. So I believe we're going to begin with Tara Anken, and then Michaela Hewitt is going to speak specific to the TIF district area and district plan. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you to allow both of those speakers to come forward.
Okay, thank you, Sharon and Tara.
Your Honor, if I could make one comment for those in the public. Councilmember Lozinski has recused himself from any discussions or decisions on this issue, so if you see only six votes being cast, Councilmember Lozinski has a conflict of interest, has recused himself, will not participate in the discussion, will not participate in the voting.
Thank you.
And he doesn't count as a quorum. There are only six of you up front.
Okay, was that Tara? Welcome.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing us to be here tonight and to present this project to you guys for consideration. Along with me, I have Samuel Herzog, who is the developer on the project. So between he and I, we will be sharing some of the preliminary information with you guys. And then along with that, I didn't break out the information into the different hearing sections, so I'm wondering if we run through the information and then move forward from there. And then Michaela can maybe add after me. So, next slide, please. I'll let Samuel step in and introduce a little bit about himself and what he does.
Thank you, Councilman Mayor, for the honor to be here tonight. We look forward to communicating clearly what we're intending to do and hopefully moving forward with your approval. Unique Opportunities LLC is a partnership that was created between myself and my business partner Troy Johnson, who's in the audience tonight. We're committed to developing affordable housing in outstate Minnesota. Both Troy and myself are residents of Fergus Falls, Minnesota, and we've done developments in four communities in Minnesota, including Breckenridge, Minnesota, Pelican Rapids, Fergus Falls, and Alexandria. The reason we're down here tonight is because I'm fairly actively involved with management in the community. I own Herzog Property Management, and we manage 123 units in Marshall as a part of about 700 units around the state that we manage. Those 123 units that we've managed in Marshall have given me a fairly good idea for what the rental market's like in the community. And I've definitely seen some things that have made me notice that there's definitely a need for more housing, and specifically, not just more housing, but a newer, higher-quality housing. Our units, like many of the units in the community, are very aged and aging more every year, and it's very difficult to keep them in a very high-quality, tip-top shape. And we do our best, but it's a challenge. And there's always going to be a need for the price point that these older units provide, but I think there's a significant need that we'll be able to show tonight for these newer units that will provide a way for Marshall to continue to move forward with housing every year that we go forward now.
Next, please. So to kick it off a little bit, I'd like to talk about the City of Marshall Housing Study, the Comprehensive Housing Needs Analysis that the city contracted with a private company to do in 2015. And a number of the items mentioned were very significant and really speak to this project and why it's needed. So a couple of the high points, we find that the greatest demand exists for contemporary market rate building, and the prevailing rents in Marshall might be too low to build a project and make it be financially feasible. So if you look on the bottom there, it even makes reference in the housing study that the potential for a public-private partnership to reduce development costs is likely needed. One thing I'd also like to note about the housing study is that it was done in 2015, and there's been no substantive changes to our economy, aside from maybe some of the units being a couple of years older. We have had a few built in town, but not putting a dent in what the numbers show here. So I'll talk a little bit about the numbers from the housing study, and then we'll move into some of the amenities that were identified as needed in the housing study. So in total, we find demand to support 608 general occupancy housing units. If you look on the bottom there, it says 371 new general occupancy rental units in Marshall between 2014 and 2025. What we've noticed, and you know, I haven't counted every unit that's been built since this housing study was finished, but we haven't put a dent in that number. Certainly, we've made a little bit of progress here and there, but 107 units would be about a third of what the need has demonstrated according to the housing study. Also, I'd like to bring attention to that second bullet point there. Marshall's rental housing unit market is aging. The median year built for all properties as of 2015 was 1980, and there had not been a new project developed since the mid-2000s. Now, we do have a couple that have happened since then, but smaller units, smaller numbers, a little bit of a different niche than what this would fill. Roughly 38% of the units were constructed in the 1980s, 25% in the 1970s, and 8% prior to 1970. So if you add up all of those numbers, roughly 50% of the units are 40 years old or older. And along with that can come some challenges. People are looking for more modern features and more amenities. So on the same note of amenities, amenities are a big deal to many people, especially from an attraction standpoint, and we do have a number of businesses and employers in the room that can probably speak to that later and some of the challenges and opportunities that they see from an amenities standpoint. But right now, our market currently has a few types of housing options. So right in the housing study, these are all excerpts directly out of the housing study. Due to the lower positioning of much of the existing rental supply, a significant portion of the market rate units are priced at or below guidelines for affordable housing. And what that does is when you don't have any other units driving up the prices, your prevailing rents stay low, and then it kind of creates this cycle where you can't get, you know, appraisals to match out with what the prevailing rents are. And housing is really a complicated issue. There's some people in the room that can also speak to that as well, so I won't get into that too much. But I think we can go. The bottom point I wanted to bring up is younger singles and couples, you know, in their late twenties, early thirties, who are really looking for that newer rental housing stock. We can get into that later. So there's a couple of problems with the housing market right now. Finances don't work for private developers to build apartment homes and make a profit. So, you know, they're in it to make a profit. They're not going to build it if they don't make a profit. Making a profit is not a bad thing. You have to, it's a business. Almost all the housing that has been developed in greater Minnesota and even in the metro has been developed with some sort of federal subsidy. So it's kind of whether we like it or not, if we want a project like this to come to Marshall to help us grow and to help us, you know, reach that level of economic vitality that we're striving for, we really need to consider this seriously. Governor Dayton just employed a housing task force. Actually, John and I attended a meeting last week in Sleepy Eye and talking about these exact same issues that many communities in greater Minnesota are facing. It's not an issue unique to Marshall. A little bit on the data and trends. One thing that I would like to point out is that even though it's rental units, rental is a stepping stone to homeownership. So say there's somebody, they want to move to the community, they get a job, they move here, they like it, they're going to buy a house. So that's another aspect of, you know, it's not just somebody moving in and moving out. They look at making Marshall their permanent home, Lyon County their permanent home, which is what ideally we want. Interest rates bottomed out, you know, in 2016. Right now, mortgage rates are in the mid-fours, so, you know, now is the time to do something before they creep up 5%, 6%, 7%, which makes projects even more economically and feasible. And right now, unemployment rate is very tight. So really, all of the stars are aligning with lower interest rates, you know, unemployment rate, goods stable, thriving economy, but these projects aren't being built, and there's a reason, unfortunately, why they're not being built but for a subsidy such as TIF. And then a couple of other points that I wanted to bring up is millennials. You can read a lot of different articles in the newspaper or what have you about millennials. They're waiting longer to get married, and they're waiting longer to have children. They're more transient, which translates into increased rental demands. So a lot of young and working families are looking for something like this. But not only that, I mean, this is open for everybody. There's 80% of that that's market rate, so it could be an option for couples who plan to retire or downsize, snowbirds in the winter, want no maintenance, but they want a nicer housing option to live in. And then another comment would be that, you know, we have 160 acres being developed in our Commerce Park right now for industrial development. And I know one of the first things that businesses say when they're looking to locate, "Well, what do you have for housing? Where are they going to show their people where to live if, you know, sometimes there's vacancies, but sometimes there's not?" And I know that the employers in the room could attest to that. So that's another thing to keep in mind as we continue to grow. So this is the site. As Dennis mentioned earlier, about 13 years ago to the date, the city or HRA purchased the site. The total site or the total parcel right now as it sits is 18 acres. Unique Opportunities is proposing to purchase the south 8.26 acres at that purchase price of $22,000 an acre. This is actually what the site looks like today. Literally today, this picture was taken. What you can't really see from the picture is that there is a four-foot-high berm that runs along Legion Field Road, so it provides a really nice transitional buffer for the single-family residents that are on the other side. And, you know, EDA 101, City Planning 101, there's light industrial on the backside, but then across the street, there's single-family housing. So this proposed project would create a really nice buffer zone in between the two. And so this is what it looks like today, but hopefully it doesn't look like that forever. We want to grow. So this is what the proposed project would look like. And growth is hard, but it is needed, and this is a real option on the table for our community right now, so we can talk a little bit about what that looks like. So the project is, this is a rendering of all of the project after it would be built. It's going to be proposed to be built in three different phases. The first two phases would be 36-unit buildings, and then the last building would be 35 units plus a community room for residents to entertain or use at their leisure. It would also include two 20-stall parking garage units and 212 spaces overall, along with a community playground area, abundant green space, and then listed on the upper-right-hand corner would be the market rate rental rates. So these, you know, it's no secret, these are probably higher than some of the other units that are being rented for in Marshall right now, but there is a demand for that upper level. So, you know, a one-bedroom at 750 or a two-bedroom at 850 is not necessarily going to compete for the same clientele that a, you know, 550 or 600-bedroom is going to attract. This is actually a photo of the inside of another unit that Mr. Herzog has built. As you can see, it's really nice, inviting. They have stainless steel appliances, in-unit washers and dryers, which is huge for a lot of people that don't want to leave their clothes down the hall, and it's just easy. You can switch it right in the unit. I know a lot of people really look for that. And they're a nice, comfortable living. Again, these are just more pictures of some of the projects that they've done. This is a preliminary site plan of how the site would be laid out on that south 8.26 acres. As you can see, the far west side of Legion Field Road, there would be a berm there, but then there would be two driveways, one entrance and one exit. The three buildings are set back from the road, so they're not right on the road, and they probably could have done this project or proposed to do this project on seven acres or maybe even less, but they really wanted to create a really nice, welcoming, open facility with ample green space for their residents. And that's one thing that I really like about the way that they are proposing to do the project. They're proposing to incorporate a potential dog park, a community garden, and then they do have the playground that's slated, it's on the plan there, near the road, but it's behind the berm and set back far enough. So, and then the north side, there would be the detention ponding. This is just a preliminary floor plan. As you can see, it's a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. So this slide talks a little bit about the past history of Unique Opportunities, and the point is not to really get hung up on the numbers necessarily, but the point is to demonstrate that there are other communities that are using TIF as an economic development finance tool to help facilitate growth and economic vitality in their communities. So it's kind of, you know, it's not exactly apples for apples. Some communities give the land for free, some communities, they pay, you know, above-market rate for the land. It just kind of all balances out in weighing what a project looks like. Some communities waive their utility connections or building permit fees. This is not exactly the case, but, so it's not apples for apples, but again, it's just demonstrating that TIF is an economic development finance tool that's used and that works. For this one, I might ask Samuel to come up here.
So what we've done, to create projects that work is very difficult to do in outstate Minnesota because what we can get for rent is so much less than the Minneapolis area or the St. Cloud area or the Duluth area. So what we've done is Troy Johnson is the contractor that is my partner and owns half the project, and he's done most of our projects in-house. This will be a little bit farther away than most of them. Most of them we do are within about an hour of Fergus Falls. Marshall's about two hours and 20 minutes from Fergus Falls, so we're looking to sub to a lot more local contractors on this project. So what we're intending on doing, we've actually met with a couple of excavators in the community already, and we're going to continue to reach out to more local contractors. We're going to set up a day with the Chamber of Commerce that all interested contractors on any area of the project can come meet with us, look over the plan, see if it's something they're interested in bidding, and we'll give them all an opportunity. And there'll likely be some of the contractors that we work with in northern Minnesota that will also bid on the projects. However, it's unlikely that they'll receive them just because of how much travel time they'd have to bid into their project. So we anticipate being able to sub out, hopefully, 70 or 80% of the project to local contractors in the area, which is always a positive for the local economy.
Next, please. So I'll let Samuel talk a little bit about his unit mix and percentage of area median income and the number of units that fall into that and his other properties.
Absolutely. So one of the requirements of TIF from a state legislature perspective is 20% of the units in multifamily have to be affordable, meeting 50% of area median income. And we actually anticipate being able to have more than 20% meet that median income. We target, you know, part of our mission statement as a company is to try to provide more affordable but also nicer housing than's available for a lot of people in the area. And we anticipate seeing closer to 30 or 40% be at half of that median income. Some numbers, Alexandria, where incomes are a little bit higher than some of the other communities we've dealt with, we have 33% that are at the 50% of median income. We have 41% in Fergus Falls, and the numbers are actually even higher in some of the smaller communities like Pelican Rapids and Breckenridge that we're in. I just don't have those specific numbers right now. But we anticipate, like I said, more than 20%, even though the formally imposed requirement is 20%, and that comes from a state legislature level. And it's also a fair amount of work from a management perspective to make sure we're meeting all the requirements, doing all the paperwork and documentation. And so we'll make sure that, like I said, those 20% are all documented, even though it'll be a higher number of that that meet those requirements.
The next slide, please. So these are the actual numbers as far as the area median income for Lyon County. And Minnesota Housing Finance Agency sets these limits, and they're updated annually. So for projects built for the next year, these would be the numbers. So there would be 20% of units at that 50% level, and then the columns are identified by how many, by the household size, how many people are in the household. So as you can see, like two people, it's 30,000; four people, it's 37,500. So that's that lower income bracket that that 20% of housing units would be targeting. This is just a few of the support letters that we've received from these different companies, so I won't really go too much into great detail on that. But in addition, our office has already received calls on people saying, "Can I get on the waiting list?" Or, "When is that building going to be built?" And, "I want a first-floor ground unit that faces west." And I'm like, "Hold on here." So, you know, I explained to them kind of the process, but they're on my call list, you know. So that on that slide. Next, please. A couple of things that set this project apart real quick. Energy-efficient infrastructure, so they use, you know, LED lighting and some of those other green building materials throughout to make it really energy-efficient and strive for lower utility costs for the tenants as well. Secure entry and video surveillance, not found in every housing development, but this one would definitely have it. Stainless steel appliances, washers and dryers, higher-end contemporary finishes. And then we mentioned the community room for entertaining. And then one thing that is really worth noting is elevators. And elevators are becoming, you know, increasingly important as we think about our aging population and mobility, as we, you know, have baby boomers maybe getting older, snowbirds down south. Elevators is really one of the selling points, and depending on what the bids come back at, they really do want to put an elevator in at least one of the buildings, if not two or three. It just kind of depends on what those bids come back at, at the time of the project bidding. And they would have an onsite manager, and the buildings would be smoke-free. A little bit of the project details, and Michaela will get into a little bit more of the financing end of it, but this would be an $11 million project that would be direct investment into the City of Marshall, direct investment into Lyon County, and then you have all of the ripple effects of what that investment does. So the request is to issue a pay-as-you-go note, so it's not the old way of bonding, it's the actual pay-as-you-go. The developer has to create that increment in order for them to realize anything. So really, the risk lies predominantly on the developer and very little risk for the City of Marshall to do that. So why is this the right project? It meets most of the key criteria in the housing study, and it would help us put a dent in what those needs are identified at. They're ready to break ground, they have the engineering on the projects substantially complete, and this would be minimal upfront infrastructure cost to the City of Marshall. If the City of Marshall were to develop the site themselves, we would have to put in infrastructure, sewer, water, curb, gutter, lighting, detention ponding, and then not only would we have those initial costs of putting it in, but we would also have to pay for maintenance of those systems as well. Where here, we're getting by, I think, for a little bit cheaper, and then they actually have to maintain everything, all of the units, all of the infrastructure as time goes on. And then, as Samuel mentioned, they do specialize in housing projects in greater Minnesota, so a town like Marshall is not new to them. They're very familiar with our community and really thrilled about the opportunity to bring this project forward. An $11 million project, it just doesn't happen by accident. There's been, like Dennis said, one offer on this property, and this knowledge has been known and has been showed with the community, with our housing study being available, being presented when it was completed, being shared with a number of developers. And there's an $11 million project on the table right now that would create an opportunity for so many people in our area, not only in Marshall but really all of Lyon County. That could be a really significant benefit to our region. And not only that, but TIF is nothing new for the City of Marshall. There's been a lot of great, successful stories of TIF being used. Heritage Point is one of them. I won't go into that in too much detail, but TIF only uses incremental tax dollars. It's not taken away from something that we already have. So with that, I will turn it over to Michaela, and she can answer some of the other financial end of things. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Michaela Hewitt with Springstead. We are the city's We are the city's municipal advisor. I'll try to speak up, thank you. City's municipal advisor, working on behalf of the city, reviewing the applicant, the application for financial assistance and their request for tax increment. The purpose of my presentation tonight is to provide a couple of things. I know it was a few months ago that we were here talking about tax increment financing, but for those in the audience and may have missed that meeting, I wanted to provide a brief overview of tax increment financing is, what it means, how it works, hopefully shed a little bit of information on the financing tool itself. Also want to talk just briefly on the policy discussion on why cities use TIF and how it is a valuable tool to consider using for certain projects. Also want to provide an overview of the tax increment financing district, housing district number 5-1, within the proposed redevelopment project area number five. Tax increment financing, most of you are familiar with the term, but what it is, is it's a tool that a lot of communities use to capture the tax-based growth from a new development or redevelopment. And the tax increment that's captured by the city is used to finance certain improvements related to that development and allow that development to occur. There is a fixed term for when that tax increment is captured by the city, and that depends on the type of tax increment district and what the obligations are related to that district. And then, once that district is decertified and terminated, the obligation has been fulfilled, that increased tax base will flow to the city, county, and the school district. One thing about tax increment financing is that all property owners, whether you're within a district or outside the district, you do pay your taxes. So it's, it's not any kind of deferral of taxes actually being paid on the properties. So again, generate, the actual tax increment revenue dollars are generated by the increased property value that is a result of the new development that has occurred. The property taxes related to that increased value are used to facilitate certain development activities over the life of the district, and it is the capturing of the city, county, and school share of the taxes by the city for that period of time to finance the improvements all related to that tax increment district. This is a little illustration of how tax increment works. We start with the base value or the existing value of that property today. Any of the taxes generated from that existing value is referred to as the base tax capacity of the district, and the taxes from that value will, will be continued to be collected by the city, county, and school district. One thing to point out in this situation, because the property is tax-exempt, upon sale to the private developer, there will be a base value for this project. And while it was not generating any taxes now, a portion of that, once it becomes taxable, will generate taxes to the city, county, and school as part of the base. The buildings that are constructed, that generates the incremental taxes, and those are what would be captured by the city over the period of time to finance the improvements necessary to allow that development to occur. This is another illustration to show how tax increment works, and really, this is just formulating the city, the, the state's property tax system. You start with your base value, which is at the bottom, the original TMV. That generates the, the tax capacity, which is how taxes are calculated in Minnesota, multiplied by the local tax rate, and that is what the base taxes are available to the local taxing entities. Any of that increased value above the base is what generates the capture tax capacity that is captured by the city, and generates the tax increment revenues for the project. One thing to point out here, there is a process for creating a tax increment district. You have a TIF district and you have a project area. The TIF district has to be created within a project area, and as you can see from this illustration, the usual approach is for TIF districts to be created within a project area. You can have multiple districts within a project area, but you have to have a project area that that district's created within. The case for the project proposed for you tonight, the boundaries of the TIF district and the project area are the same. So instead of seeing the larger circle for the project area, the TIF district and the project area would both be in that light purple, the light blue shade of the TIF district. I'll get into a little bit more about what that means for why you have a TIF district in a project area. To create and consider a TIF district, you have to have a TIF plan, and then within that TIF plan is the statutory authority of which to create the tax increment district, the estimated budget for the use of the tax increment revenue dollars, and what the purpose for creating that tax increment district is. You, as part of the process, there's notifications, there's also public hearing, which is why we're here tonight, and then following, take any comment, and then following consideration for creation of the district. If it does move forward, that district is certified with the county, and that's when it officially would start to generate the tax increment. A little bit on general discussion of why cities use TIF. It is a fairly well-known tool, and it is one of the primary tools that cities have to facilitate certain development, redevelopment, and other initiatives within their community. This is just a listing of why cities generally use tax increment, and there could be several reasons listed here why you choose to use it, and what you're trying to achieve with the financing tool. The underlying reason for using it is that you're trying to stimulate development that otherwise would not occur, and that's the but-for test. But for the use of the tax increment financing, that proposed development would not occur. Also to, for trying to retain existing tax base and looking for tax-based growth, also trying to encourage development of uses that otherwise would not occur, such as affordable or lower-income housing, enhancing the tax base, facilitating infrastructure improvements, and then trying to coordinate master developments within your existing plans. In reviewing the applications for tax increment assistance, there's, there's a series of questions that are asked, and ultimately, what we're trying to determine is what is the barrier for that development or redevelopment to occur, and that's referred to as what's driving the gap. In looking at a project, there could be one or more reasons that are driving the gap. Are there extraordinary redevelopment costs related to that site based on what you're purchasing and trying to develop? Are there extraordinary affordable housing costs, trying to make a fit in a market that doesn't quite fit? And as we go through here, you'll see some of these, you'll decide from a policy standpoint if there really are the true use for why you want to use tax increment, such as if you have a holdout property owner, the land price is too high, what's causing that? In some cases, you're looking at development needs that might pay for more than they are because you're trying to oversize and plan for future growth and maximizing the tax increment tool. And then we get into the bottom where it's really not generally the best public purpose, but that's for each to decide, is that typically, tax increment is not used to provide less risk and more return than what the typical market allows within a development. There are several different types of tax increment districts. I'm not going to go into each one of these, but the city has created pretty much all of these with the exception of, I think, one, maybe two. What we're looking at tonight is a housing tax increment district with a maximum term of 25 years after receipt of first increment, for a total of 26 years. There are certain costs that can be financed with tax increment, and these costs are continually evolving over time. But the general costs are everything prior to vertical construction. That includes public improvements, acquisition, site grading, site preparation, demolition. And also included for certain types of districts, including housing districts, are some of the actual construction costs related to the housing. And again, that's secured for the affordable housing-type projects. Little bit, just more information on what public improvements can be financed, and there are, again, traditional public infrastructure improvements related to new developments. Want to just touch a little bit on, there's two common methods for how projects are financed that are within tax increment financing districts. The first is upfront financing, and this is where the city would, could either internally finance a portion of the project cost through an interfund loan, taking cash on hand and financing certain improvements, or deferring the collection of fees over a period of time and collecting increment over time to repay that, or through the issuance of bonds in which the city is financing a portion of the costs upfront, and then relying upon that future revenue stream to repay the debt service. In the upfront financing, the city is taking on the risk of financing those costs. There are ways to mitigate that risk with different mechanisms. However, at the end of the day, the city's relying upon that revenue stream to make the debt service payments or repaying interfund loan, depending on how it's financed. With the pay-as-you-go note, this shifts the burden of risk from the city to the developer. In this case, the developer is responsible for financing all the costs upfront, and that's typically done through a combination of debt and equity. They provide, get the private financing from their lender, use their own equity, they finance the total project cost. If it meets all the conditions between the, the city and the developer, and those would be contained in a development agreement or a TIF agreement, then the developer is eligible to be reimbursed for a portion of those costs that are agreed upon. In this case, again, the developer pays all the costs. It must pay the annual tax increment, or excuse me, the annual property taxes, at which point a portion of those property taxes become tax increment that the city collects to reimburse. The proposed tax increment financing district number 5-1. So as I mentioned, in order to consider creation of a tax increment financing district, you have to adopt the tax increment financing plan. The plan that's created for this district contains a lot of the statutory language that allows the city to use tax increment financing for the specific project. It also includes information relating to creation of the district and the necessary findings that have to be made. It includes the budget for which the tax increment can be used, including the sources of, of revenue, which is tax increment from the proposed new project, to finance certain costs related to that project that allow it to occur. Also included is the estimated impact in other taxing jurisdictions related to creation of the district, and that includes the amount of increment that is expected to be generated from their share of the taxes over the period of, the life of the district, and then the ultimate boundaries of the tax increment district, and previously saw what those proposed boundaries are for this district. District must be created within the project area, so you're also being asked to consider the redevelopment plan for the redevelopment project area number five. And that redevelopment plan provides a statutory authority, the statement of need and public purpose, and the statement of objectives for which development is occurring within that project area. As I mentioned, the project area boundaries are co-terminous with the boundaries of the tax increment financing district, and just that little over eight-acre area of land. The project is being proposed within the, the tax increment financing district, as you heard a little bit about already, is about 107-unit multifamily affordable housing project. Construction on the project is expected to commence in 2018 for the first phase, with the remaining phases, two buildings to follow suit, once the completion of the first phase. The total estimated taxable value for those properties is about $7 million with all three phases of development. And based on the value of the project and timing assumptions, the total estimated increment is about $2.3 million over the life of the district, and that would include about 2.07 pledged to the developer, 90% of the increment each year, with the city able to retain the remaining 10% for administrative or other expenses. The district, again, has been set up to be limited to just the project being proposed within this district, so that following creation of the district, fulfilling the budget as contained within the TIF plan, the district would, at this point, with, with the way it's drafted, need to be decertified with the project going back on the tax rolls. And that would be following the, the project that's proposed within this district. Again, the district, the TIF plan represents the, any assistance being provided as pay-as-you-go as reimbursement to the developer for certain project costs within the budget. There are some statutory findings that the city needs to find, to make, to approve a district. One is that the TIF plan will afford maximum opportunity, consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole for development by private enterprise, that the TIF plan conforms to the general plans for development of the city as a whole, and that the tax increment will qualify as the type of district being proposed. In this case, we're looking at a housing tax increment district. You heard those requirements, and those are the income requirements for the residents that, for the life of the district and the obligation, one of two tests have to be met, that either at least 20% of the units are restricted at 50% of the area median income, or 40% of the units at 60% of the area median, median income. And the developer will be required to provide annual reporting requirements to the city in order to be eligible to receive tax increment on that requirement. The second, the remaining finding is that, to be made, is that the proposed development, in the opinion, in the opinion of the city, would be unlikely to proceed solely by private investment without the use of tax increment financing, and that's referred to as the but-for test. In this case, it's reviewing the information as provided by the developer to make a determination that, without the use of tax increment financing, the project that they have proposed would not be financially feasible, and that tax increment is necessary to fill that financial gap and allow the project to occur. The final piece, as these projects are being reviewed and due diligence is done on the project, there's a series of steps that must, that are followed to make sure there's a financially sound project before you. And that's, this is going through the, the steps of, one, looking that you've got the statutory authority for creating the type of project that you're being, that you're proposing, in this case, a housing tax increment district, that there's a market demand for the use that's being proposed, and that was presented to you earlier, that you have site control and a qualified developer to allow the, the properties entitled and can move forward, that the expected benefits of that project exceed the expected costs of it, and that's, the benefits exceed the, the expenses of the, benefits exceed the cost of the project, and that the probability that the project would leverage additional spin-off development. In this case, the developer is buying a portion of that parcel, and one of the hopes would be that with this project being a catalyst for future development that could occur adjacent to the site and would not need tax increment financing based on future growth. In reviewing the, the request for assistance, there is a, this is the needs assessment. We determine that there is a need for an amount of public subsidy. So in doing that, there's two tests that are asked. One is, is tax increment financing necessary for this project to proceed? And if the answer to that is yes, then we work to determine what a reasonable level of assistance would be based on the financial components of the project and the benefits to the community for that particular project. Determining that the financing of any of the public improvements related to that development cannot be financed solely by that private development, and then also if the private improvements can be sort of financed solely by the cash flow performance of the project upon completion. In doing that needs assessment, there's a review of the developer's financial information, verifying the assumptions that were used, understanding any changes to those assumptions and how they would impact the overall performance. And then ultimately, the purpose of reviewing all of that is to assist with making a determination that the project as proposed would not proceed without, but for the use of tax increment Just an illustration showing that the orange area is the base value of the district. The purp, the light purple is the incremental taxes being captured, and then following capturing of those taxes in the tax increment district, the dark purple is the new tax base that everybody can enjoy once the district, everybody, meaning the other taxing entities, can benefit once the district has been decertified. The next few slides are just a brief history on how the city has used tax increment districts before, and this just illustrates all the districts that have been previously established. Most of these first slides are all older districts that have since been decertified, and the funds closed after they fulfilled their purpose. But we've got listed here District 1-1, 1-2, 1-3, and then 1-4 and 1-5, and then 1-6 and 1-7, and 1-8, 1-9, and 1-10. These are all older districts. Only one is open, and that will expire at the end of this year, and that's 1-5. And then the next slide are all newer districts that have been established recently, and they're all within the city's existing redevelopment project area number one. One thing I want to point out is the last one, District 1-15, that's actually 1-14, that was my typo. But you'll see, we've got a couple of economic development districts that were financing certain industrial park improvements, and a couple of pay-as-you-go notes for the newer Similarly, in the city's redevelopment project area number two, there were four districts established, all related to the Schwan, Varia Schwan's development and expansion opportunities. And then the last two are District 3-1, and long ago decertified, and 4-1, which is another district created and still operational, is a pay-go note. So with that, I will step aside and address questions later, if that would be the preference.
Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
We'll open it up now for any other, any public comments. We'll first ask any member of the audience to speak. Al.
My, my name is Al Gregg, and I've been involved with the real estate community in terms of rental property for 38 years in Marshall. It doesn't make me an expert, because I'm not from out of town. I live in Marshall. You have to be out of town to be an expert. Let me make it very clear that we are not, we are for having new apartments. We think that that's a great idea. However, we're not in favor of using TIF money to provide an unfair advantage to others. I looked tonight at this... I looked tonight at this good presentation of affordable housing with large apartments, and stainless steel appliances, and washer and dryers in every unit, and that's called affordable housing. If they didn't work with those kind of conditions, would they need TIF money? I don't know, but it seems like that's, that's a very upper level, that's not affordable housing, that is deluxe housing, and we're pushing that as affordable housing. If the goal is to, is to spur new apartment construction, the TIF financing here will have the opposite effect of providing housing, the units, how would you compete with, unless you had a subsidy, how would you compete with the quality level that you're presenting? So are you planning to have another program for those that want a three-plex or a six-plex, smaller units, that the person in the general area here could afford to maybe get involved If you, let's just take an example, if you had built a three-plex in the last year, and only to find out tonight that with this complex and the competition that would create by you, providing money for them, are you going to help them out with a check? I think that that would be really, you've got to think of how, you know, how the TIF money will affect the small person wanting to develop land after this has started. The rental market right now is soft, you go back to a study of 2015, well, that was a good study, accurate perhaps, but what has happened since 2015? The growth, what is happening? Okay, let's, let's bring it now from 2015 to 2018. If you go up to Montevideo, Minnesota, announced 29th of this, of April, Montevideo Technology will be closing. This is a company that's been there 50 years, and will lay off 110 people, okay? In, in December, well, it was actually November, in Montevideo, Logic PD in Montevideo closed. They laid off 80 workers, okay? So we're up to 190 workers in Montevideo. Midcontinent now is going to drop with the name of 200. Some of those might have been able to find jobs up at Montevideo, that, those people are looking for jobs, so to the north of us, we've got to be able to absorb a high percentage of Midcontinent's employees. Now, if they're really doing lumbering and making cabinets, are they going to fit into the work that's needed here? What we should be doing, and then I'll get off, because that's, I know I'm over three minutes, is the EDA, and we need to react, our EDA and our, and our energy from the folks here on, on the city council, towards getting new companies who can pay well, who need market rent housing. We can't rely on industries that need affordable housing to make their cash flow. They, many industries want to bring people in at a lower level of income, and let you pick up their housing needs as kind of a side benefit. We want, we need real decent jobs, and that's, the philosophy right now of most EDAs is to just look at current businesses and help them grow, and that's been the philosophy. But we need to learn how to recruit startup companies, and work with small companies where we have a better chance for success, getting the big company we can't compete. So, my feeling is that we should say no to the TIF money, down, or have them downsize for affordable housing, so they don't need the TIF money. Amen.
Thank you, Al.
I'm Carl Rollick, I got 28 units in Marshall for 20 years, and I'm a contractor. I'd like to show the council members some papers on, from Cal Brink. I'm not very good at being a public speaker, but I'd like to address the issues on this letter from the EDA and Cal Brink. Identify yourself. What did you ask on the property owners, how you came at apartments, were, were, what do I want to say, if they were, how you come up with that survey on empty apartments and so forth?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Well, it's in the letter there, how they...
The housing.
The housing, yes. How you come up with, on the vacancies and so forth. Anyway, the tour, let's see, okay, who are the touring, the places that apartment owners that do tour in town here, to get, come up with your average?
We didn't do the study, we hired a study done by Max.
You hired somebody else to do it.
So we'll have Cal speak in a little bit.
Okay.
You know, because they won't be, they won't be able to hear him otherwise, because he's...
For me?
They won't be able to hear him on the TV, so, because only one person can speak at a time, so.
Okay. Well, we're just wondering how they come up with that survey, and if any of these multi-dwelling property owners, if they've got interviewed, is there anybody in the audience that have been interviewed by any people, these multi-dwelling apartment owners? Show of hands, one, two, have been interviewed by Cal?
We didn't do the study.
But, the study, so, so it's two people out of how many? How many other ones did not? How many multi-dwelling apartment owners have not been interviewed? How many? Raise your hand. So there's an awful lot that have been not interviewed by this survey, so... So, none of our places have been inspected, and mine's not been inspected, inspected by this people, so I just wonder where they got this survey from, and state zero impact on local rental, whatever project scheme, from the EDA, their personal feelings is what it says in the, what they think about this apartment thing, and, and it says in there, he believes that that's what he, what is being done. So we are going on a hook and putting our people on a poll for two and a half, 2.1 million, most of the apartments on a market rate. The subsidy of the market rates, units in the current economy state is insanity, so that's all I have. Yep.
So who else would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for a couple moments. I'm Doug Olson, I represent Schwan's, and we're for this proposal, and the reason being, I'll tell you a little bit about, every day at Schwan's, we have over 600 people come to work in our manufacturing environment, so our distribution centers, our manufacturing environment, and the bottom line, over the last year, we have not been able to staff this organization. We are currently 50 people down, continuing to look for people, and our radius of recruiting has gotten bigger and bigger throughout the southwest Minnesota, as far as we know. One of the major challenges we have, and we have several, so there ain't just one answer, is, is options for housing, and not everybody wants the same thing, so we may have good available things, but they want different things, and different people want different things. So, as we look for job, we have entry-level jobs open, we have operator jobs open, we have some professional jobs open, but one of the challenges we continue to face every day is how do we attract these people? And housing in our community and all the great things our community offers is one of the challenges they offer. So we have invested as a company, we've raised wages twice over the last six months to try to fix some of that problem, but there's always so many things we can do, and we look for your continued support in helping us. Thank you.
My name's Steve Otto, and I'm like Carl, I got about 30 units, and my biggest concern is, I was going to ask, if anybody had the survey and he asked that question already, but I wasn't contacted either, but the biggest problem I have with my apartments is, you don't make any money anymore because the taxes are so damn high. I mean, it's been ridiculous. I built a, a one, one unit apartment, two-bedroom, over a garage. The council was great helping me, but the building department fought me the whole way. I finally quit building on it for about eight months because I was so fed up with the process. But I just want to say, there's hardly any profit anymore. To upkeep them the way you want them, and we do, you lose money. It's, the taxes are just too high, but I don't see where there's another need, where they're gonna, we got to pay their taxes for them to build, so that's my piece.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Mary Martins, Regional President and Chief Executive Officer with Avera Marshall. We did, similar to the Schwan Food Company, did provide a letter of support for the project. Obviously, I cannot opine on your work around financing or location, I have to trust in the leadership of the community and the Economic Development Authority. From an employer's perspective, well, actually, first, an observation, as I listened to the presentation and the discussion by Tara, as well as Springstead, I'm reminded of conversations that we have at the Southwest Initiative Foundation Board, of which I serve, regarding the importance and the connection of housing to rural economic development, and so very similar conversations happening at our board table. In addition, similar to the Schwan Food Company, we employ around 600 people in the region today, that is an increase over, over the last several years. They too are looking for various housing options along a continuum. I think many of us are familiar with the, the small number of single-family homes in certain price ranges today, and so the options for people, especially those looking for transitional housing, are limited, and creating a challenge for us as we bring new people, again, similar to Doug and the Schwan Food Company, both entry-level positions as well as professional-level positions. I happen to mention just tonight to Cal and Tara, that we do have, as a very current example, two new leaders joining our organization this summer, one transitioning from the state of Washington and one from North Carolina, for leadership positions, and neither at, to this point, can find housing that they're looking for. So again, the need for, excuse me, transitional housing is there, and thus provided the letter of support for you in consideration, so thank you.
Yes, Norm Gregerson, Greg Gregerson Management. I wish I should, would invest in this, if there's 600 people looking for places to rent, that sounds like a terrific place. I hope they build their unit, and more power to them. I'm just not so sure it should be subsidized. Every summer, we've, well, we have managed over 100 units of rental units, and we find that if you replaced a carpet, paint the walls, put in new cabinets and new appliances, they may be 30-year-old buildings, but they're pretty nice 30-year-old buildings for the people that hit our market space. So, the upper end, yeah, there's probably a demand there, and I hope they build those, beautiful buildings, but I'm not so sure that we should be subsidizing it. All last, well, last summer, we always have vacancies, during the winter, we had vacancies. Where are those 600 people, that there should be at least five or six or something that calls in, that would need a place, but we had vacancies all winter? So, more power to them, I think they should build them, just not subsidized. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm. I think the gentleman in the third row was next.
Good evening. My name is Mark Tenge, and how many of these are low-income, and are some of them low-income based, or?
20 percent.
Okay, so, how much?
20 percent of the 107.
Many, I moved into a nice quiet neighborhood like four years ago, and moved back to Marshall, and you're not talking four units, you're not talking 12, you're not talking 48, you're talking 107 units. I live right directly across from that, and it's a nice quiet neighborhood, and you got the railroad tracks there, there's going to be, what is it figuring, like 400 people, 500 will move in there? I mean, a train that backs it up now, you go across the tracks, and you got Legion Field Road where lots of kids and activities and the parks and stuff, you know, they dart out. I drive that road a lot, but as far as that berm goes, it hides nothing. I got a basement in the house, and I sit on my deck, I mean, a 40-foot building, you can see the whole field and everything just sitting on my deck, that berm's got nothing whatsoever to do with it, and I'm sure it's going to bring down the value of my house. I don't think there's probably a person in here that wants it built in front of their house, so I just, I'm against it. I'm against the location, I'm not against the housing, but the location, I think it's really a poor location for it, and I think it's owned something else right now, isn't it? For, I'd rather have businesses in there than four or 500 people, you know, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, your point?
Hi, I'm Larry Doom, live here in Marshall. In the past 15 years or so, Dr. Rich from the college has done many surveys, and one of the things he always, it's always made his top-five list was affordable housing in the city of Marshall, and I think we need to look at, also, Norcraft's closing, I have several friends that worked there, it's not because they didn't have business, it's because they can't find employees. My friends work in 50, 60 hours a week, and they cannot afford all that overtime, so they are going to close that plant, if they would have employees, my friends tell me they'd still be going. Also, you know, the Ralco's move to Laverne was not only based on a water supply, but I'm hearing that a lot of that had to do with the employees that they felt they were not able to hire for what they needed in their true shrimp operation. Being closer, Laverne closer to Sioux Falls, they thought they'd have a better drawing card for that. I think, you know, those are some things that we need to consider, this would give us a chance to draw more people to town, and I think if Marshall's going to grow and continue to attract businesses, we need to come up with some type of affordable housing. I have a couple employers that have had key employees that have left town because their wife did not want to rent anything that we had here in town, and they were looking for more different amenities than we had to offer. And I wonder, 50 years ago, when people sat down and looked at what the college was and was not going to be, and decided to move forward with that, what would Marshall be today if those people were not stepping to the plate and getting that college built? I think, you know, if we're going to continue to grow and attract businesses, we have to look forward to what we have here and what we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Ty Brower, and I live on Rainbow Drive, which is one block to the west of where this development's going to happen. First, I want to state I'm not against the development, there's some concerns with the location. First of all, there's, you know, housing all to the west, and then also to the south of where this development's planning on being. If this apartment... If this apartment complex or this development is built right here, you know, like mentioned earlier, that berm that's there, it doesn't, there's no use for it, it's three-foot-high dirt hill. Also, it's gonna look really nice, brand-new, but come five, ten, fifteen years down the road, what's it gonna look like? I drive around town quite a bit, I'm in sales, I'm on the road quite a bit, and there's quite a few rental properties that have a poor appearance, and I'm not one to point them out or anything, but my question is, who regulates that or who polices the appearance of these locations? Because if this location, it looks great now in pictures and everything, if this location were to turn into one of these poor appearing properties, that's gonna bring our values down in our houses. Now, also, now that you have more people here, public services, there's gonna be a much greater need for them, the police department, the fire department, and the emergency services. Now, with them, probably gonna need more money because there's more people living in town, are they gonna be requesting more money from the city? So now, indirectly, are our taxes going to increase because of this development? Just some food for thought. And then, also, just to the south of us, in our development, along the railroad tracks, but south of US Bank and where I live, there were five houses that were just recently built, and they're all low, they were through some program, I'm not sure which program, but they're for low-income-based families. Now, I have talked to about four or five families, and three of them have been very good friends of mine, that have looked at purchasing these houses, they were denied because they make too much money. So now, we already have low-income housing, full houses with garages, that people aren't allowed to purchase or to utilize, but yet we wanna put up a complex that's subsidized for low-income housing. So, there's just some concerns on the residential side, and I know I have neighbors here, and I've talked to other neighbors that have the same concerns, and I just wanted to bring them forth to you guys that, you know, this sounds great now, but where are we gonna be at in ten years? So, thank you.
Hello, Rick Goodman, Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. We own and operate two rental projects in the city of Marshall. We own and operate forty-eight other developments across southern Minnesota, and most of our, almost all of our developments are affordable, primarily done with form of housing tax credits, about seventeen-hundred-and-fifty units. What I wanted to talk about is, I think this is an opportunity for the city of Marshall. We have no dog in this fight, we have no connection with the developer, but this is an economic development issue that we hear all across southern Minnesota, it's also a finance issue. The economic development issue, we're talking to employers constantly, we're hearing employers who are getting frustrated and with their inability to attract and retain employees, and on the economic, on the finance side, it is very difficult to come in with a private development that can actually raise rents in a community, and you need to have a balance of rents. All of our rents that we have in our facilities are restricted rents, they tend to keep the rents low in a community, so you cannot raise those rents. So, when a developer comes into the community, sees there's a market, you run into the fact that you cannot borrow capital because it's based on what those rents are, you also have to have a much larger infusion of equity. So, this development team, I'm suspecting, has borrowed capital and is making an investment in the community and will raise the opportunity for future development to occur. Many communities across Minnesota are struggling where they have large demand, but they cannot attract private development into the community. So, all we are able to do is using federal subsidies to develop housing that keeps the rent at a very low level and constrains the economic opportunity within a community.
Thank you, Rick.
Greg Taylor, developer in Marshall, we've got almost two hundred units. Mr. Goodman answered Mr. Greg's warning to you. We've got almost five hundred subsidized units in Marshall, and that's holding the rents down. So, you are gonna add more, plus you're financing developers? No one is going to come. Mr. Greg brought it up to you, Mr. Goodman just answered the question. That's gonna be a problem. The government financing is gonna stifle any future development. And this housing study that you did, I think, is bogus in certain areas. The only ones I can comment on are mine, that affect me. Since, in the nineties, I built sixty-eight units. Since two thousand, I built sixty-four. Now, that's a hundred-and-thirty-two units. It wasn't on your housing study. And then, did you do anything about, have you done any investigating about vacancies, current vacancies? Now, I handed you a letter earlier that Roger Andis sent me, and he's been an acquaintance of mine for thirty years, because we supplied lumber for briar wood and one or two of those eighteen's he's got. They couldn't come today, they're elderly, they got a family deal going on, I don't know the details. He faxed that to me, I brought you a copy. It talks about the vacancies, what you haven't even looked at. His numbers were worse than most, but the vacancy factor, the last six years, has probably been, if you're lucky, a five, and mostly, I think you're gonna find nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen percent. Now, Mr. Greg commented on the businesses closing in the area, Shwan's is downsizing and has been, my office is right across the street from them, they used to park in front of them and fill up the streets, now, the parking lots are at least a third empty. Your people in Cottonwood are closing, there's gossip about a couple others out of town, and for now, we've lost TruShrimp for whatever reason. We need economic development in the form of businesses coming in to hire people. We wouldn't have these vacancies, and if you'd take a survey before you vote, you'd find out there's all kinds of empty units in town, and I don't know how many of them are junkie like Cal told in his letter, that people don't wanna rent, but they're, none of them are mine. And I think if you ask around, and if you drive by our property, which the mayor lives by, you'll know that's true. There is not demand. We have a problem here, and throwing public money at it is foolishness. Let these people come to the table with their own money, like the rest of us did. You bring businesses in here with your EDA money, you'll have employees, they'll need a place to live, and the rents'll go up, except for the five hundred units we have in town that are subsidized. You want me to list them for you, or are you familiar with them? Almost five hundred, it's in the high four-eighties, nineties. We don't need any more. Thank you.
Greg.
I'm Al Eggermont, I've done business in Marshall for fifty-five years, and worked before that in Marshall. I used to bring in, I had a jukebox route, I used to bring in a half a ton to a ton of quarters every month, it was spent in Marshall. My business was sold to a Mankato company. Where do you think that those quarters go now? They go to Mankato, that's a trend in Marshall, we got the big boxes taking out the small places. The worst thing that's happening that I see in Marshall is, within seventy miles, there's four casinos. These renters are going to casinos and they cannot pay their bills. I've got eleven apartments, that's not a lot, but I'm glad that's all I've got. I've got six of them empty for six months, and three, I've got three empty now. They're beautiful apartments, I have a master carpenter that takes care of them, I've got people that paint and scrub and clean, and we live in Marshall, we don't have bugs, we have a good operation. I've had a thirty-thousand-dollar line of credit with Stan at First Independent, and I've had it a long time, and I'm trying to get it paid, it's on my apartment business, and I'll be damned, every time there's five, ten thousand dollars in that account, boom, it's taxes. And I ain't kidding you, and you can look at my books, and, you know, or the electricity, or the upkeep, or new appliances, my apartments are clean. I would let any one of you go through them, they're good, there's grass available on most of them, and there's, we take pets, they're good apartments. So, if this project is worth its salt, it can stand alone. If we need apartments in Marshall, they've been built locally by local owners, and those owners stay in town and are active in our schools and our college and the rest of it, and they're not gone out of town. Thank you.
Anyone else? We'll hold off on the clapping.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the time, and thanks, everybody, for your opinions and your views, although sometimes it may not seem like we care about those, everybody needs to get their opinions and let everybody hear those. It's obvious they're an organized group, so are we. And I didn't hear virtually not one positive. And I, for one, personally, think there's a lot of really good, exciting things going on in Marshall. You don't hear them at this meeting. There's a lot of companies that we have helped expand, and I'll touch on some of the things that you touched on, and not to argue or debate, but I wanna just let people know kinda how the EDA works. We do probably spend eighty percent of our time working on, eighty percent of our time working with companies, trying to help them expand, and Asans de Gard with the Ralco expansion there, Beverage Wholesale there, Ralco, or Runnings there, Action Tracks here there. You saw a list of probably twenty different TIF projects. I think it'd be interesting, in the room, the people that have ever gotten an incentive, whether it's a TIF or some type of incentive, there's a lot of those people in this room, and I have a hard time understanding why they'd be so completely against this when they were the same exact recipients of similar projects in the past, some smaller, some bigger, I get that. And I'm for everybody getting one, if it's available, if it's legal, if it helps Marshall grow, that's the type of incentives that we have to think about. The survey, there's been some, a couple pieces of survey, everybody's questioned the vacancy. We hired Maxfield, one of the most notarized professional companies in the nation, to do that housing study, and there's a certain amount of faith you put in that. Did they interview everybody? I'm guessing not, based on what I heard tonight. I don't know whether they gather all their information. The one piece that I put a lot of faith in, as they mentioned it very, very strongly, there is age apartments, and I feel for the people at home, and you can't help that they're forty and fifty years old, but the fact is, they are, and you can't make those brand-new again. So, if we get brand-new ones, we want it to be at a rate, high enough rate, where it impacts them the least amount possible, so that's why we're getting to the nine hundreds and a thousand to try to bring that type of thing. I can tell you, it's, council has to make tough decisions, and I know that, there's difficult decisions. If we get a council that dwells on the negatives and all these companies that are closing, what about the companies that are open? And what about the new businesses that came here in the last five to ten years? There's been a bunch of them. The fact about the housing study is obsolete, we have more population in Marshall in two thousand and eighteen than we had in two thousand and fifteen when that population study was done. That's what determines housing needs, not if Shwan's moved twenty people, or if Avera added twenty people. We have a population that's growing, we just finished our EDA report for two thousand and eighteen, we've had population growth again. So, the housing study is still valid, it could be fluid, I'm sure there's pieces of it that are fluid, but I'm gonna ask you tonight to think about the future of Marshall and think about the positive things. These kinds of things help drive business to Marshall. You can't have companies get up here and tell you that they're trying to find employees, they haven't found, we've got like thirty houses for sale in the city of Marshall, they've gotta go to apartments for transition, and then hopefully they'll take time to build a house or housing comes open, and that becomes transition, that's what we need. Pay-go note takes all the risk away, and I know I'm touching on all kinds of stuff, this is a whole different world than some of the incentives we did in the past, where we would be writing this check out to two million for this developer and hope the project works. If this thing doesn't work and they build one building, it doesn't get filled, it costs the city zero, nothing, because they don't get any increment. They have to perform, or they lose the money that they put in to develop, and that lot is gonna take some development. As far as the traffic in that area, it's zoned R1 before we did the changes, it's gonna be housing, there's gonna be more traffic, whether it's with this apartment or additional housing. The only difference is, the city's not gonna put two or three million to develop the streets and keep them clean and snow removed. So, now, I'm gonna ask you to think about the positive side of Marshall, think about years from now, think about the impacts you can have on the future of Marshall by making the right decision. So, thank you again, and thanks, everybody, for your opinions and your issues.
Thank you, Cal.
Does Cal pay taxes in Marshall?
Well, anyone else wish to speak at the microphone?
I've been in this zone for nine years.
Anyone else wish to speak? Then, you're next, then.
I'm Karen Mombeck, and I do, I reside on Rainbow, and I echo the concerns of the other residents that have spoken. I do have a real concern about the traffic, there would be, there's a difference between a hundred-plus units and other types of housing, and the traffic on Legion Field is already high. The, going into Main Street, it's that Street, Tenth Street, I believe is what it's called before it gets to Legion Field, is very narrow, it's congested, the other side is already, people have already spoke about, it's a busy, busy, busy street already, and to add all of those units is just gonna make it more congested, I'm just very concerned about that. And then, just a question, what is, are there any plans for the remaining ten acres? I don't know who owns it and if there's any plans, is that gonna be housing, are there gonna be more units, another hundred units built there as well? That's my concern. Thank you.
I have a question on the project, not all the finance of it, and I just need the figures. We have a hundred and ninety units, how many parking places are set in that unit, that project?
A hundred and seven units proposed, number of parking, Tara?
Two-twelve.
Two-hundred-and-twelve.
Well, this is strange, because back in the seventies and the eighties, now, that's not eighteen seventies and eighteen, nineteen seventies and nineteen eighties. When we had apartments, we had, we had two and a half parking places for each apartment unit. These are the ones out by the golf course. There's some other units that were built with less than that. Now, why two and a half? Most households have two cars. Why the other half? They have company coming, where are they gonna park? You can't stack them, so that's what we did back at that time. Now, there's some developments that probably snuck by or weren't required to have that, and where do they park? Village Drive is an example, and I don't know how the utility company and they, when they're, or the maintenance company as far as plowing, but their cars all over Village Drive. So, if they only have that number of parking places for that number of units, are they gonna park on Legion, on Legion Road, Rainbow? Where are they gonna park? That's my question about the project, not all this other stuff that's so vital to it, but I think that's a vital place, because you can't park in the railroad tracks.
Doc, just, Doc, to answer your question, they're gonna have over two-hundred-and-fifty parking spots for a hundred and seven units, one-hundred-and-seven. One-hundred-and-seven. Thank you.
Okay, you've had your hand up.
Hi, everyone, I've met all you before, previous meetings, Jeff Gladys, United Community Action. I'm... I'm the housing director there. I've been there for 30 years, 10 years as a director. And listening to the discussion tonight, I hear a lot of valid points on both sides. I mean, there's concerns both ways. I tend to be that one that wants to meet in the middle a little bit more, but I just want to tell you what I'm hearing in my job that I've worked and that I, I'm in. So I'm in housing five days a week and maybe even some more than that sometimes. But I'm hearing from other communities, you know, we work in a nine-county service area, and I'm hearing the same thing from employers and from city leaders and from city businesses, you know, whether it be in Sleepy Eye where we were the other night, or it's Hutchinson, or it's Marshall. And I'm hearing, there's no houses for people, for our employees, for us to bring employees into. I hear that on a consistent basis. I also hear it on a statewide, greater Minnesota basis. I was just involved in a meeting in St. Cloud where we had 40-some people from all greater Minnesota. And a lot of the problems are the same that they're having as that our area's having. And this, this, there's so many different things that tie into it, the high cost of building. We know it's, it's expensive. I mean, that, it was brought up earlier tonight. It's expensive to build. You can't hardly build a unit and make it cash flow. It's really hard without getting some sort of incentive to build. And different funders that I have worked with are asking communities to step up and invest in their community besides having them put money into it. So, you know, when we talk about, you know, when we were just talking about the Small Cities Grant here a few months ago that we'll be hearing about very shortly, my, my funder in that is saying, what will Marshall do if we give Marshall this money? So that's a pretty standard theme from different funding sources that I work with. When I, and we talked about it that night, for this, a city the size of Marshall, when I submitted that grant application in February, there were 27 houses for sale in town. We need, we need, I think we need all types of housing. I think we need upper-end rental. I think we need low-to-moderate income housing. You know, the housing we're seeing built right now is more upper-end housing. We don't see a lot of affordable housing, and we have different definitions of what affordable housing is. But I want to emphasize that we do need buy-in from the communities and that we, I think we need to keep an open mind and then maybe there's somewhere that we can come out of this and take the positives from both sides and move forward. I did want to answer some questions about five houses that are being built in Marshall since it was brought up tonight, just to give you an update since I have the mic here. One of those houses is sold. A second one was just about sold. There's only two of them that are complete. Of those five houses, three of them are not finished yet, so they aren't even on the market yet. The restrictions on those houses are maximum of 115% of area median income. And we have applications for those houses that are too high of income. It's a hard market to build affordable housing for, and I think we've got builders in the room here that realize that, too. How do we get these families into, into what's termed as affordable housing? We're selling two of those houses at $195,000. Is that, you know, how do you, how do you market, or find that market at 195 in Marshall for a family earning 115% of area median income and less? It's tough, but we're looking at different options. If people have questions about those houses, there are, like I say, it's, it's low-to-moderate income. There are restrictions on those. But in my opinion, I'll end with that, but just, I think Marshall needs more options for affordable housing. And if upper-end rental units free up more affordable housing, then I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. The, it's now 7 o'clock. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoke that would like to speak?
My name's Joanne Gilbertson, and I live right across the road from where this project will go up. And my concern is the safety of the children. Those railroad tracks are very close to where this project is going to be. How are you going to keep those children away from the railroad tracks? The traffic on Legion Field is very, very strong. There's lots of traffic. This is going to add more traffic on that street, and there's lots of children in that area. How are we going to protect the children? That's my question.
Anyone else wish to speak? Now, is there a motion to...
How about us? Can we talk?
Yes.
Okay. Because I have some questions here. Elliot, did we just rezone that whole area, R3 now? But it's for this particular plan?
We amended the comprehensive plan.
And the comprehensive plan, right. So under the comprehensive plan, the idea is to make this all 18 acres R3. Is that, is that correct?
The comprehensive plan was amended to allow for high-density residential in the entire 18 acres. That's correct.
So your point, we're using eight acres for 100 units. Well, there's 10 acres left. That's another 100 units. So you're, you could double the number of units in that particular area, and that would have a big effect on the traffic in that area. Right. The, I assume that these units can be rented to college students. I think college students would qualify as low-income, and so, I mean, it would be affordable college, for college students. And I teach at the college, so I don't have anything against college students. But I know college students can be kind of noisy. They can have a lot of cars, a lot of traffic, and sometimes they're still in the maturity stage where they're, they don't always think about consequences of things like traffic and children playing around in the streets and so forth. So if I were a homeowner, I would certainly be concerned about what's happening in my neighborhood. The, there's something called in economics, the law of supply and demand. And what I'm hearing here is that for some of the apartment owners here, your rents are low and, and you can't charge enough rent to make a go of it, make a profit. Well, when you increase the supply, that drives price even lower, and it makes it even harder for apartment owners to make money. And so, again, what we're doing is increasing the supply. If demand stays the same, prices will have to decline even further under the law of supply and demand. I, let me just, those of you that know me know that I'm, I'm against government handouts. I don't like the idea of government giving money to rich individuals and rich companies. I prefer a fair and level playing field where every individual and every company has the same opportunity to succeed or failure. And I don't like it when government picks winners and losers. And here we have an outside company coming in, and they're going to get all kinds of tax benefits from the city. One of them, I assume they're getting tax-exempt financing, correct? Well, it's going to be a tax-exempt bond or note? I'm not talking about a general obligation one. I'm just talking about, is, is the interest on that bond going to be tax-exempt or not from, from federal income taxes? The people that buy the bonds I'm talking about. But the notes, the notes. We're talking about notes here, right? Well, I'm looking at the documents that were provided to us. And in here, there's a $2,070,000 note, correct? It says in here a $2,070,000 note, right?
That's the eligible tax increment.
Okay. So where's the $2 million coming from?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, the reference to the $2,070,000, that would be the pay-as-you-go note from the city to the developer upon completion of all the phases of development. The way it's drafted now, there is no interest on that note. And the developer is responsible for obtaining all the, all the financing on their own private financing. It would be at whatever rate they can negotiate with their lender. And the city would agree, subject to creation of the district, approval of the contract, all the next steps, subject to the conditions being met by the developer, would be eligible for reimbursement from tax increment up to that amount of that $2,070,000. There is no interest rate on that TIF note. It would, it would be pledged as 90% of the increment up to a certain number of years or the principal amount, whichever was met first.
So, so there's no tax increment financing note involved here? It's, it's private financing?
It's a tax, yes. It's all privately financed with, the city would issue a tax increment note to the developer. However, the developer is financing all of it privately. There's no tax-exempt financing from the city, no tax-exempt financing.
Okay. They're financing their, a lot of their construction costs privately, right?
Correct.
So I'm talking about the, the tax increment financing that we're talking about. And in the schedule here, your office did some studies here, and it talks about the $2,070,000 note. Okay. So what is the $2,070,000, $2,070,000 note then?
The $2,070,000 note would be the, the maximum amount that the developer could be eligible to receive based on future collections of increment. So it's a tax increment revenue note from the city to the developer that would be executed upon fulfillment of the obligations.
So there is a government note involved?
There would be, there'd be a TIF issue, there'd be a note issued between the city and the developer, tax increment revenue note.
Jerry, you want to also chime in here?
If I could maybe, maybe explain to, it's called a note, but it actually is a document that puts a cap to the amount of increment that they could receive on a pay-as-you-go basis. So there isn't any borrowing or anything related to that to the note. So what that says is every year, when Michaela was showing the drawings, when there's increment that's generated, so the incremental taxes, not the base taxes already in place, the incremental taxes collected, they would be eligible to receive in that year up to 90% of what's collected. They only get it if the building is built and they pay the taxes, if, and the taxes, you know, it's taxable. And then they would get that as a dollar, but there isn't any money upfront that's exchanged or it's not, not a true note in the sense of the city being obligated. They would only give that on an annual basis.
For point of clarification, and technically, if we're looking at interest, they're paying 10% interest on that, because they're only getting 90% back, correct? I mean, if you wanted to consider it, if, if we're looking at that as something back, they get, they get 90% of that, of that increment. So if the city retains 10, so technically, then if you're, we're looking at it under, under Glenn's model, they're paying 10% interest to the city.
Well, let's move on.
They're not paying 10% interest, are they?
No. And I, and I think, just to be clear, there isn't any interest, because it's not a true loan or a note. It is simply a cap on the amount of available tax increment that they would get, generate, that they generate every year, and it's capped at the $2.
And what they're getting is reduced taxes every year.
They pay the taxes and then the city refunds them taxes.
And they can, they'll use that to pay off their, their loan then.
They could, yeah. They have to pay their taxes first and then they're, and build the building and do everything that is required in the tax increment, and then they could, they could receive up to 90% per year.
It's my understanding, it's unsecured financing that.
Exactly.
There's, there's no security on that.
The city is not out in front of this at all. They don't owe them anything at this point, and nor would they until the increment's collected.
One of the concerns, and I voiced it earlier tonight when we had our HRA meeting, is that tonight the city approved the sale of this land to the new developer. And based on the estimates I have here, and it came from the city assessor's office, the value of the land is $320,000. And the city sold it to the developer here for $181,000 or approximately $182,000, which is about a 40% discount on, on the purchase price of that land. The assessor evaluated it at $37,511,000, and the city sold it for $22,000. When I, when I look at your analysis here on the bond, you did a present value analysis of the difference in taxes. And according to your analysis, the present value of the benefits is $1.1 million. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the tax increment projections, yes, include the total projected increment over the life of the district is about 2 million or 2, up to $2,070,000. The estimated present value of that net amount is about 1.1 million. Of course, that's based on an assumed discount rate and date.
So in a sense, the city's then providing a $1.1 million benefit to the developer?
If you want, the present, over the life of the district, the total amount is, would be up to $2,070,000, again, based on their performance of all three phases. If they were placing a value on that today, that amount would be closer to 1.1 million. And alternatively, and we mentioned the interest rate on the note, oftentimes what you'll see in these pay-as-you-go notes is an interest rate or that principal amount plus an interest rate of a certain amount. In this case, it's all applied towards project costs, and there are no interest expenses. So it is just that total expense, or that total amount of $2,070,000 with no interest, only to finance actual capital costs of the project.
So in simple terms, we've got gross tax increment of $2.3 million and a net revenue of $2 million. But in present value terms, in today's dollars, that comes out to $1.1 million using the 4% interest rate. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so then they do get a substantial benefit by doing this. Otherwise, they wouldn't be doing it.
They, they, the way it's structured is it would be a pay-as-you-go note, and they would get the annual increment each year, subject to all the conditions of the contract.
Other input as part of the public hearing from the council at this point. Steve?
I've got multiple, multiple questions, I think. The first one goes to the, the heart of the matter. I mean, when you look at money, what is the price that the city, because the city owns this property right now, correct? What's the price of land rent that we're getting from the, from the farming that's going on?
I believe this year it's $170 an acre for that 18 acres, so.
Second of all, from a city planning standpoint, are we ready to deal with the added traffic and the added people in that area? Because that, that is a true concern.
From the engineering standpoint, the road is adequate. The street network is adequate for any type of loading that we'll be able to put on it with apartment buildings.
But for, when I say traffic, Jason, I mean, personnel, people, kids, you know?
There'll be more traffic, I'm sure.
Are we able to mitigate the risk to the maximum that we are able to do in our responsibilities as a city?
We can look at any specific ideas that you may have.
Well, it's not for me. I mean, this is the thing. If it goes on, it's done, and then we're going to have to deal with what we've created. So I want to make sure that we have plans for how do we deal with added traffic, added children, added college kids potentially, you know? Those are, those are real issues.
It's certainly something we'll continue to monitor, like we do with our entire roadway network. If there's improvements that can be made, we'll look to make those.
Absolutely, Samuel.
Thank you. The, the answer that I would provide is, you're definitely not wrong. There's going to be more traffic, because there's more units on the road. You know, working with the city when we came in here, they identified this as a ideal parcel, because the roads were designed to handle that traffic. On our site, and if you look at the plan, you'll see this, we're trying to make this as contained of a site as possible. There's going to be a dog park there. There's going to be a playground on site, so that the kids don't necessarily have to go somewhere else. They're going to stay here. The entire perimeter of our, of the parking lot is going to be a sidewalk, so that we'll be able to, the kids can walk all the way around without having to go into a road or something like that. We'll be using crosswalks across the driveways and things like that. So there's always a risk, because there's cars on the road, but we're doing everything we can from a development perspective to mitigate those risks. And, you know, I mean, there's tree lines, there's things that we can do, other natural blockades that we can do. At the end of the day, when we're going through the development process, we value safety as much as every one of you in this room, and if there's something we need to do, we're absolutely going to do it. And if there's other perspectives or ideas, we're more than happy to look at those and see if they're viable to make happen.
Mr. Mayor?
John, and then Craig.
I just want to comment. I do, recognizing that the traffic is a concern in there, I did have an earlier conversation with UCAP, what operates the community transit, and talked with them about putting in, when the time is right, putting in a bus stop in there. So it's not, certainly not the answer, but on the other hand, any use of mass transit that we can get in there would be helpful, and they're very willing to do that.
And Craig? Okay, yes.
It won't take very long, but in the morning, when we've got like five buses that come through, Lind comes through, Marshall, at least four buses come through, and we've got US Bank traffic coming in, we've got people coming in from Ghent, coming over to go to other areas in the town. And now with the road construction going on with the bridges and stuff, we've got more traffic, but I know that's going to end. However, I think that you don't realize how much traffic there really is on Legion Field Road. I think it needs to be looked at. It really does. I don't think you understand. My concern, again, is the children and the safety, and I don't know what you plan on doing to keep the kids off the railroad tracks. What is... What is your plan?
Well, one of the things we've done is, one of the things we've done is set the buildings back to make sure there's, I, I want to say there's 50-plus feet, maybe even 75, between the lot lines. That's much more than the city requirement, but we wanted to set it back so, you know, a two-year-old's much less likely to go 75 feet than they are if it's just 15 or 20 feet out their backyard. There's also a pretty wooded area in there, and should we need to, I mean, we're definitely willing to look at fences or other options like that. And this is something that, I mean, I respect your concern completely, it's very valid. I mean, safety, at the end of the day, is probably all of our number-one concern, and we'll do whatever we need to do. I mean, that's my commitment to the council and to the members of the community.
Craig, and then David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I drive the Legion Field area every day four times back and forth to work. I work out on the fairgrounds, and I live up by Heritage Point. I've actually had conversations with the engineering department this past winter about some of the intersection interferences and trying to deal with some of the traffic volume and speed on Legion Field Road. And it's a crapshoot getting on and off of there during US Bank in and out, and especially at the railroad tracks, because I, I can't believe how many people think that it's good to go over those railroad tracks at 35 miles an hour. It's actually pretty entertaining, as long as I'm not maintaining the vehicles. So I've had, I've had conversation, and I know that, that engineering's talked about doing some traffic study there. They're going to go out and put some traffic counters in, and, and I think your concerns are valid. We've had discussions here at the council about being a pedestrian-friendly, bike-friendly community. That talks about separations of traffic and different availabilities. We've had a lot of conversations pro and con to sidewalks. One of the things, as soon as this proposal came up, when you look at that area north of the railroad tracks, on that whole east side of that road, there's no sidewalks. Okay? We just, we just gave a conditional use permit for, for a place of worship on the north end of that road. That's also added some parking spots and some more pedestrian traffic and a lot of young children. Those are things that, as a council, we need to be conscious of, and that's part of the investment into the community that we, as a city, need to make. And I think we all share in the fact that it's important for us to have, especially our children, but all of us. I'm kind of an old geezer, and I don't move very fast anymore, and I like to try to walk. So I think that sidewalks, Jim and I've talked, sidewalks connect the neighborhoods, neighborhoods connect the communities, and we don't have to drive 30 miles an hour on all of our streets. You can go from one end of town to the other and change it by two minutes, hitting a stoplight, and maybe by another minute and a half slowing down a little bit. And so I think that, that those are all things that, as these packages, no matter if it's this development or any other developments and changes in our community, we need to be conscious of that, and we need that public input where those hotspots are, because we think we know them all, but if you don't drive Legion Field at 8 o'clock, between 7:30 and 8:10, and if you don't drive it between 11:30 and 1:15, and then again from about 4:30 to quarter after 5:00, you don't see the real traffic flow. But that real traffic flow is significant. The good news is, there's a lot of people going to work out in that area. There's a lot of people coming into the community from outside of town using those streets because they're coming in to work in the community. That's great news. We need to figure out and make sure that we handle it safely.
One of the good things about having growth and dynamism in a community is the, the patterns of traffic and commuting you think you know are subject to change, and these things do sneak up on us. I'd like to suggest, on behalf of my colleagues on the Public Improvement and Transportation Committee, that we sit down with the engineering staff, probably as soon as these, these units, if they do get built, are occupied, and, and do some intensive monitoring of what the new and changed traffic and pedestrian patterns are, and figure out a plan. I mean, options can include traffic calming techniques, you know, we, we don't always like those, but maybe there's a need for them in a situation like this. You've got a very complex chunk of the city that's about to get more complex, and our committee works, needs, often I'll just, things get presented to us in our council committees that have been cooked, and stirred, and packaged, and put on a plate by staff. And that's not a knock at staff, that's what they do, that's what they're hired to do. Sometimes, however, it's our responsibility to be a little more proactive and be talking with staff before things get put in the oven to develop these kinds of responses, and I'll make that a particular commitment, if I'm still around, to do that as we get this, this next phase looked at.
On the public hearing, any other input from the council or members of the audience as part of the public hearing?
The reason I brought up about the bonds before is because on page five of the Springsteen report, it talks about the maximum principal amount of bonds, as defined in the TIF Act, secured in whole or part with tax increment from the TIF district is $2.3 million. Okay? It says the authority, the Housing Authority, currently plans to finance the improvements in affordable housing costs in the form of a pay-as-you-go revenue note to reimburse the developer for certain project costs associated with construction of the project, but reserves the right to issue bonds in any form, including without limitation, and so forth. That's where I was coming up with the, the revenue notes and the bonds, and there's a, we talked about this before, that the different percentages, as far as the, we have a 40% rule and a 20% rule, correct? As far as the median income is concerned. And the reason for the 20 and the 40% rule is because of the Internal Revenue Code. And if you look at the Internal Revenue Code, Section 172D, and I, I have that in, in front of me here, but that's where I think that the 40, or the 20 and the 40% come in, because they want to meet those requirements in order to get favorable financing. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think there's a couple issues that were being addressed there, if I could respond to them accordingly. The section of the TIF plan that Councilmember Bear Coler is representing, or referring to, is by statute, any form of obligation between the city and developer is considered a bond for intensive purposes, and so even though there is no bond, there is no commitment, that's the way we have to file it from a statutory standpoint with the OSA. And so, the language that is drafted in that section of the plan is, is intended to provide flexibility to the city for using those tax increment dollars per the budget in sections K and L of the TIF plan. And by statute, we have to file it as such as being an obligation of the city. They are now including any kind of obligation of the city as, as a, as a quote-unquote bond, and so that's a requirement that we have to show it that way. It is misleading, I agree, because there is no, it's a financial commitment, but it's not a, a risky financial commitment. You're committing to increment that may or may not come, subject to future years of collection.
Okay, with regard to that, again, I, I assume that the, the reason for setting this up this way is to get, the reason they have the 20 and the 40% rule is because they get something favorable from the taxes, and, and I, because there are tax-exempt bonds here that, that relate to the 20 and 40% rule, and I think that it also relates to the state statute saying, to be qualified housing, in this case, you have to meet either the, the 40, the 20% rule or the 40% rule, correct?
There are certain types of, so the, the code that's being referenced, there are, this type of project is not being financed by tax credits and other such projects. Subject to how the financing is working for an individual project, there are requirements on what the, both the income and the rent, rents can be for this particular project. In this case, the reference of, of being able to establish a tax increment financing district is based on those same income requirements as, as certain other types of financing are. But aside from having to meet those income requirements, the 20 at 50 or the 40 at 60, for an affordable housing, to qualify as an affordable housing tax increment district, all the other financing is purely a private financing deal between the developer and their lender.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Anyway, that's, that's where the bonding and the note, what I was talking about, it's in your document that was given to us, and that's what I was referring to as far as the bonding notes.
My one other question, Cal or Tara, can you tell me, was this offered with TIF financing to local developers? I mean, is there any reason that a local developer couldn't come and get TIF financing?
If a local developer came with a similar proposal that met the but-for test, this incentive or this tax increment financing would be made available to them as well. It is not limited to, you know, Herzog and Troy, if you will. If somebody else came and we went through their pro forma, did the analysis, the same but-for analysis that we did through this entire project, if, you know, they have to meet the certain requirements, but absolutely, yes, if there's a local developer that is wanting to do a project like this, we would, by all means, work with them. Another piece to this is that I have talked with a couple local developers, and Cal could, could add to that, but there's a, there's a handful of developers, not just in Marshall, but everywhere, that, that maybe don't want to work with tax increment financing because there's reporting and stuff that's involved with that. So even though there might be willing developers that are, you know, doing different market rate or different developments, they don't want to do a project like this because it does involve extra work on the developer's behalf.
I just comment on that, you know, because of the TIF, there is the 20% affordable housing. So those two are really the tie together. It's not the 80% that's market rate, it's the 20% that's...
And they will do income certifications, and they're, they're submitted for a review.
So any other developer wanting to get TIF has the requirement for the affordable aspect of all the units.
Yes, with use of TIF financing, yes.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
With regard to the, the $2.3 million here, it's my understanding this project could be done in phases, three phases. So with regard to the $2.3 million, is it a certain percentage will be for the first page, or can they get it all upfront, or what's, what's going to happen here as far as the $2.3 million?
So, in the contract for private development, as Dennis and Michaela mentioned, where there, in the draft, there's one note, but we talked about doing three notes with three separate parcels. So because the bulk of any expenses would come with the first building, because say they build the first building, they're going to do the parking lot, they're going to do the infrastructure, they're going to do, you know, the parking lot lighting. So the first building would be associated with 40% of that increment, and then building number two would be 30%, and the third building would be 30%.
So the other, the short answer to that is that the reimbursement from TIF will come only after the expenditures are made, and the tax revenues are collected.
Right.
But it's on a 40, 30, 30% basis.
Correct. So say they build number one, and they never build number two and number three, they're never, ever going to get to that $2,070.
And even if their costs are very high in the first phase, they, they're only going to get 40%.
They're only capped at 40%, correct?
How many taxes are being pulled from that land right now?
Zero.
Tax exempt.
Correct. One correction to that. We do rent the land, and so there's...
That's income, but not taxes, but, yeah.
Right, so there's some property taxes from that, based on, on us renting the land. It's $387 for the city, $253 for the county, and $194 for the school district. If we weren't renting it, the tax revenue would be zero.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Motion by Craig to close the public hearing.
Second.
Seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. That motion passes, we'll note the one abstention, so the public hearing is closed. With the action then before us, the consideration is a resolution approving the establishment of the project area number five and a project plan, and approve and establish the tax increment financing housing District 5-1 and the tax increment financing plan. You have the resolution before you are there questions about that resolution? If not, I would entertain a motion on the resolution.
I so move.
I'll second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
Could we bring that resolution up on the screen? Could you stop right there? Okay. The question I have is about the resolution, is in the resolution, if you look at Section 3, it talks about 40%. Tonight, I, I think they've been telling us it's 20%. We have a 20% and a 40% rule. So which one is it in the resolution, supposed to be 20 or 40%?
Supposed to be 20.
So that's an error.
Yep.
Other questions about the resolution?
Just discussion on it. From my standpoint, and I have reserved making a decision on this until the public hearing, and I very much appreciate all the public hearing. And what I hear, just like Jeff said, is that we're kind of have, we're caught between a rock and a hard place. I too like Glenn, I'm not in favor of TIF stuff, but for the development won't go forward without it. And I hear from Mary and Mr. Olson that big companies, the biggest employers in the county, in the town, can't find people to work because there's no housing. Now, the question is, are they paying enough? Well, Mr. Olson says that Chwan's has made a couple of buffs and bumps in the wages, which is a great thing to do. We still have that problem, and if somebody said that, I think it was Larry, said that Cottonwood, the cabinet tree, if they would have had enough employees and enough people living around, they could have kept going. So it's a hard thing. The housing issues, yeah, nobody wants a big apartment complex right next to their one single-family dwelling, but that's a fear. If we're going to grow as a city, they've got to go someplace, and those are great places, and you got to make them convenient, you know? If you put them on one end of the town, and you make that all apartments, eventually there's going to be houses around there, too. And I think you need to think about that, you know? The fear about driving property values down, that's with anybody. If your next-door neighbor doesn't maintain their house, that's an issue, too, and I think that's being a good neighbor. And I think that anybody who owns a multifamily dwelling and is obtaining rent, you are obligated by doing that to put money back into your prop, into your property, to make it look good, so that you can bolster your rent as well. So, my biggest concerns personally are the safety issues with all the kids and everything there, and the traffic thing, because I agree with Mr. Schaefer. You know, my kids play on that park. We go to football and baseball, and there's a ton there. That's one big issue that I have. And the other thing is, is if it's a great idea, I too wonder why we haven't had any private developers, if they can get everything. You know, why isn't it built there? If somebody wants to build it, it should make money, especially if you're looking at the higher-end stuff that some of the people have for transitional. You know, that's, that, those are the questions that I wrestle with as I'm going to cast my vote.
Thank you, Steve. Other discussion on the motion?
You mentioned before about the 40%, 30%, and 30%. That was your intent, to only release 40% for the Phase 1. Is that in any of the written documents that we have that we're approving, is, is there anything in there that restricts it to the 40%?
Dennis, this is actually a question...
Right, not in the documents being approved tonight. That's in the contract for private development, which we discussed earlier at the HRA. That's still a fluid document.
That's coming out of a future meeting.
And that's coming at a future meeting.
And with regard to the, the $2.3 million then, so, just I want to make sure we understand this correctly. The Housing Authority borrows a certain amount of money to, to finance this, or where, where is the money coming out of their fund?
Coming from their annual payment of real estate taxes based upon the value of the property. They pay the taxes, and it's reimbursed back to the developer on an annual basis, based upon them paying their taxes.
Other discussion on the motion? I will move to a vote on the motion on the table. This time, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. This time I'm going to call for a five-minute recess.
Motion passes. And then the final action then would be the final plat. Jason, again, the final plat is in order.
Correct.
Any questions about the final plat?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Then move to Agenda I of number six. Agenda I of number six is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Public hearing for the new on-sale intoxicating liquor license for AJ's Family Arcade, Inc. and Marshall, and also a Sunday liquor license for the same business. Kyle Box is our city clerk. He'll conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now for a change of pace. We're going to discuss a liquor license this evening. So everything, the application is complete. We did receive everything Monday afternoon. We are okay 100% to move forward with council approval. The applicant is with us this evening as well. One, and if you'd like to ask him any questions, by all means, go ahead. The applicant has requested, since this is coming in halfway through the year, that we prorate this liquor license. He has paid in full the on-sale liquor license. So with council approval, we would be reimbursing him half of the on-sale liquor license fee. The Sunday would remain in full, would have to be paid in full.
Very good. Thank you, Kyle. So again, as part of the public hearing, if there's any audience member or member of the council. Just one comment, it's not exactly part of the public hearing, but I think it's good to see this business open. So congratulations on that. Any other input as part of the public hearing? David?
Mayor, just a question for Kyle. Kyle, when you spoke of the prorating of, this would be of the $4,200 annual license.
Correct.
And you said reimbursing the owner half of the amount?
Correct.
Okay. Bear my question, maybe I'm just reading it wrong. This appears to mean that it would be effective, is the permit effective May 23rd?
Effective May 23rd. We've had discussions of the June 1st start date.
Okay, but if it's May 23rd, all due respect, and we salute what you're doing with the projects, or shouldn't the prorate be based on that date rather than the midpoint of the year, which is July 1?
We can figure that out.
I think, I don't want to hammer this to death, but I think that's appropriate as a matter of consistency and protocol, and we may have other, hopefully have other folks starting in the middle of the year, and we want to follow the same careful process.
Good point.
Thank you.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
I would actually speak against that. I think May 23rd, June 1st were government. That's close enough for me. And there's a lot of work that goes in, and bureaucracy is horribly horrendously slow. We have a holiday coming up, so I would be in favor of just cutting it out and doing half price for six months. Presumably, nothing's going to open until June 1st anyway.
Others?
July 1st is actually the start of the second half of the year, though. So I think what, and I don't want to speak for Councilmember Sturrock, but I believe he's probably advocating 7/12ths.
I'd be happy with 7/12ths. Close to 7 and 1/4 12ths, yeah. That's cool.
Am I correct, David? Did I assume properly?
That's very reasonable.
Thank you, Sturrock.
Any other input as part of the public hearing? Jim, you've been quiet all evening.
I know.
The muzzle's been pulled. You're good to go.
I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
No, I'll make a motion that we approve the...
We've got to vote on this.
Oh!
Hold on, high speeds. Hold on.
Hungry.
So if there's no other discussion, we'll move to a vote on closing the public hearing.
No.
Motion passes. Jim, you're anxious to make a motion?
I am. I would like to make the motion that we approve the liquor license at 7/12ths per diem for AJ's.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
I think per diem would be prorated.
Prorated, then. Thank you.
Just, I tried to use a big word.
I tried that, too.
Other discussion on the motion? Glenn, you have a question.
The concern I have is that the applicant is one corporation, and the corporation signing is a different one. So we have one corporation applicant, the other one signing the document. You would think that both the applicant and the signer would be the same corporation.
And I did address that concern, and that has been fixed on the new application. It was just not in time to be posted up on here. So you're referring to Section 2-1, I believe?
Well, Section 7 has the fact that it's signed on behalf of the Jim of Marshall, whereas the applicant's name is AJ's Family Arcade.
That will be the, that's what the license is issued in. Doing Business As will be the Jim of Marshall.
But they're separate corporations. It's not assumed business name. They're actually separate corporations. You have one corporation applying and another one signing for it. And I would think that you would have to have both, or the same corporation should be doing both, applying for it and signing for it. I don't know how one corporation applies for another corporation.
Are you referring on to this last page here?
Right.
Okay. We can address that if it needs to be changed. I can follow up and refer to previous liquor licenses. If it needs to be changed, we can sure change it.
The person signing, or the company signing it would be AJ's.
I would agree with you.
And they would be the ones that actually sign it then.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? Now we'll move to a vote. Motion passes, and then the final action relates to the Sunday liquor license, and again, the same business, and I would assume the similar request for the proration.
Move to approve.
Nope.
Kyle had...
Kyle.
The Sunday liquor license cannot be prorated. That will have to be paid in full.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Steve, you were about to make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
Kyle, why can't the Sunday be prorated?
This is your new wellness program.
You should have your step on it.
As state statute, it defines what we can prorate, as well as our ordinance, which follows state statute. On-sale liquor licenses can be prorated. Sunday liquor licenses cannot. That's how it reads, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We look forward to this new business opening. Agenda I of number seven. Agenda I of number seven is a public hearing on tax abatement. This is a tax abatement that for the financing and construction of the memorial park addition, as well as a restroom at Justice Park. So Sharon, I'll call on you to start.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmen, we have, I believe, three different bonding requests, tax abatement, reconstruction bonding, and capital improvement bonding. The tax abatement bonding does require a public hearing, and we do have Springstead's representative, Terry Heaton, here to give some background on this particular bonding. And our finance director and myself can answer specific questions related to projects along with staff that are present, give us questions regarding those projects.
Thank you, Sharon. Welcome, Terry.
Thank you, Mayor Burns, and members of the city council. The bonding is mentioned, includes two items that would require an abatement bond, which would be the most appropriate type. And those items are Memorial Park, it's Phase 3 of the Veterans' Wall, and the Justice Park bathroom. They don't really fit in with any other bonding type, and in order to issue the bonds, we have to hold an abatement period hearing. To quickly run through this portion of the hearings, talk about the next slide if you would. I don't know if I have a clicker, or you're the clicker? Is this it? Is it? It's not connected? Okay, sorry. Okay, we'll talk quickly about the abatement. What is it? How does it work? And the City of Marshall has issued abatements in the past, and I think one of the things we do is we lump into one bond issue different types in order to save on issuance costs. So this will be a component of the overall bond issue. It's an economic development tool, and the name, it's not an actual abatement of, it's actually a non-payment of taxes. It's just a tool, so the name is a misnomer. But it provides the ability to have a levy, a general levy, to support a project. And so properties that benefit from the general maintenance and upkeep of the park area in an indirect way are identified. And when the approval to show that there's enough benefit for maintaining the parks, it's usually residential properties, when they are identified, everyone in the city would pay the same taxes, just like everyone else. It's really an authorization to issue this type of bond, is what we're doing when we create this abatement area. The next slide talks about how the tool can be used, and it's for improvements to private property. There's a number of items that are included, but we'll talk about public improvements that benefit property and to acquire or to construct public facilities, is what we're really doing here. The next slide is tax abatement and some examples. And you can use it for infrastructure improvements, and you can use it for construction of a community center, senior center. And where we see it a lot is in the use of the recreation facilities, because there isn't a special recreation bond, other, you know, where a revenue isn't collected. We can use a recreation bond for an ice arena or things that collect revenues, but where the fee isn't charged, this is a perfect tool. The City of Marshall, the component, just to show you how this fits into the last item, the fourth column shows abatement bonds, and it's a small amount compared to the whole issue. It's 210,000 bonds. That's because it's partially paid for from other funding sources, private donations and county funds. And altogether, you're financing $300,000 towards these projects, and by issuing a $210,000 abatement bond. And the next slide shows the abatement levy that you would have, and that is abatement revenue that comes from the, a special levy for abatement. And again, that amount equals the number of properties that we identify, what their city tax would be. That's how we qualify this, and we found enough properties that benefit in that area. Next slide, please. And the rule is that the maximum principal amount cannot exceed the estimated sum of the abatements. And there were properties included in the abatement resolution, that properties that benefit in a very loose term from the project. And all of these projects are not currently in a tax increment district, nor are they planned to be, because we're restricted in that we can't use it where there's already, where they're already in a tax increment district. And the next slide talks about the properties that have been identified, as identified in the resolution, their total $4.8 million of property value. There will be a final abatement analysis, and if we can trim down the list from there, that may happen, because I think we identified more properties initially, and the project is at 210,000 now. But this is authority to issue abatement bonds based on the properties identified. And the total abatement revenues are equal to, and they do exceed the amount of the bonds. And so you qualified with the resolution as it's been developed. So the action item on this is the public hearing on the tax abatement, which you're holding now, and then there is a resolution in the packet that would actually approve the abatement.
Thank you, Terry. Any questions for Terry?
Of the $210,000, then, how much of that is for Justice Park and how much is Memorial Park?
Justice Park is $120,000, and Memorial Park is $180,000.
I know at tonight's meeting, there was individuals voicing concerns about the high level of taxes in the City of Marshall. And I, in the past, a lot of people have talked about the high level of debt that the City of Marshall has. And here, we're borrowing another $210,000. I'm wondering if, you know, like Memorial Park, if we're going to put up a memorial, wouldn't it be good if we could just get the money that's needed to improve that from private donations and not have the city have to pay for it? Sure, it's a worthwhile project, but maybe we should be working harder at getting private donations and not rely so much on taxes to do these construction projects.
Other questions?
The total cost is $180,000. However, there's private donations secured of $85,000, and we anticipate a county donation of $15,000, similar to what they've made for other communities in the county. I'm not entirely sure on other secured donations that the Fire Chief, Clath, has obtained or the Parks Department. And let me just add to, we could have came to tonight's council meeting with additional bonding requests. We've used probably close to $200,000 out of the current budget levy, which maybe in prior years would have been bonded, but we've strayed away from that. And we've also pushed a number of projects further back in our CIP years. And the other difficulty is trying to fit it in the levy, which is something we need to strive towards. We're not able to do that currently with the amount of levy, because we've already tapped that. And secondly, our reserve balance is at the city council's threshold at 50%. So the bonding that's before you, excluding the street projects, is well over a half a million. We wouldn't be able to utilize reserves for that or the existing levy. If you're thinking about maybe considering a levy increase for 2019, unfortunately, there's a lot of pressures on the 2019 levy that we haven't gotten into yet. And I think one of the major pressures is going to be for you to keep the levy low. So we have to fit, we have to fit these in at some point, somehow. And, yeah, it really is too bad we have to come with the request, but at the same time, I think we have to fit these in, so we can get them off the docket, and we can look long range on how we're going to get to the goal of getting this in our regular budget levy process. We don't have that currently. The two projects, I don't know if any of the councilmen has been in the bathrooms at Justice Park. It's worthy of a visit, and I don't want to take any public comment or information from Scott or Preston on it. I can't speak to the Memorial Park. I guess Preston could there a little bit more than I could, but, so I just wanted to give that background. I agree with your comments, Councilman Bear Collier, about the keeping the levy low.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
My question is on this, is on tax abatement. It says it's for the better of the public in the area. So, and I just read this, I'm not against, not necessarily opposed to these projects, but would that be spread through the whole city? Because the parks, like Memorial Park benefits everybody in the city. So I was just wondering, how do you say what businesses get abated when you look at parks, which are used by all the community?
That's a good question, and one of the confusing things about the term. So go ahead.
It is, and it's a good question, and I think you're exactly right. When you maintain your parks and you keep them in good condition, and they become places people visit and maintain, it benefits the entire community. And so we could, we usually start with something where we can see a nexus and try to identify houses, but when you go beyond that, it could really could be almost any house in Marshall that would benefit from these. And so you're right. And so what we've done is identified housing, and just enough, the smallest area we can get, so that we're not putting too many, identifying too many properties, because there are limits. I didn't go through all the rules, but you can't identify the same area again for another project. You can't have back-to-back abatements, you have to wait eight years. So we're careful about the areas, even though it could possibly be the whole city. We're careful about the area. We identify and make sure it's not an area that you might want to create a TIF district in, because that would, you'd have to keep it open as long as you have bonds outstanding, and you don't want it to be, you know, use it up when you could use it for something else.
The important thing here is that the individuals, even though they're part of this abatement process, their taxes aren't any higher than they would otherwise be. It's just that their money's directed here instead of to general operations then.
That's absolutely correct.
So they're not being penalized simply because they're part of this.
Right. They're just used to show that you have the approval to issue this type of bond, but it is a general levy spread against the entire city in the same way as any other tax levy.
So the payment on the bond payment is spread across the entire tax capacity, and the abatement area is just identified, that there's adequate property in close proximity that benefits.
Exactly right.
I want to make sure my math is correct here. So it's $210,000 for the bond. And did you say $120,000 was for Justice Park?
Yes.
And then $90,000 was for Memorial Park?
Right.
And then there was another $100,000, $85,000 in donation, and $15,000 in county money?
Sharon, could we go back to the slide, so we can show how that lines up to the, it's the debt service? One more.
One more?
One more back. Thank you. So the total project cost, if you add up the Justice Park and the Memorial Park below on the deposit to the construction fund, is $300,000. That's where that number comes from. We add in their share of issuance costs, so there's small issuance costs that add up to a total cost of $310,000. And that is paid for, $85,000 coming from private donations, 15 from county funds that are expected, leaving $210,000 to be bonded for.
Anyway, of the $310,000, the $85,000 of private donations, is that only for Memorial Park or part of it for Justice?
It's only for Memorial.
Memorial. And so my question then becomes, we're going to be spending approximately $190,000 on Memorial Park, correct?
$15,000 is also for Memorial.
Is what?
The 15 is also for Memorial.
Right. And the 85 is?
It is. That's 100.
That's the 100,000 plus the 90 from the bond. Well, Justice Park had 120 of the 210. I thought that's what you said.
I thought you said 120 of the 300. One was 180, one was 120.
Justice gets 120.
120, yeah.
Right. And the rest goes to Memorial.
Yeah, you're right.
So the point I'm trying to make is, it's approximately $190,000, then, that goes to Memorial Park. So exactly what are we doing for $190,000?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Phase 3 of Memorial Park would be the Veterans' Memorial. There's going to be significant landscaping. There's a memorial garden that'll have all the flagpoles of all the branches of the Army, or military, I should say. There's pavers that people can honor, people that passed. And then there'll be like a Core 10 memorial wall that'll light up at night, similar to like S M S U, that sign, how it's a rusty, natural look. The drawings have all been completed by Gene Ernst, who designed Phase 2 of Memorial Park. His original estimate was 560 or $630,000. We've taken, scaled that back to what we think we can do. Like I said, a lot of it's landscaping, flat surface concrete, that I think city staff can do the project, other than maybe some electrical in the building of the wall.
That's consistent with the presentation we had last fall at budget time.
Yep, yep. So, but in the original plan, they had like lookouts over the river. We've taken those out of the plan, just because the river isn't significantly structured to do that lookout, and trying to raise, you know, $150,000 versus $500,000, big difference. We are going to leave it open to where we do the construction, that if more donations come in as the project starts, that we can add on pieces also.
And I'm in favor of memorials. I would prefer that, I think projects like this would be financed through private donations. Do you have any idea how much we've spent for Memorial Park, for everything that's been done on that since we acquired it? I mean, we've, the city's spent a ton of money to buy the property and develop that park already, and the City of Marshall's invested a lot of money in Memorial Park.
Yep, I'm not sure on the exact numbers, though.
That was going to be my question, too. I'm a veteran, so I'm all in favor of Veterans' Memorial. But when we have to draw bonds, we have to put priorities, because last time I checked, we didn't have a money tree, and my constituents are nailing me for costs of Marshall's taxes. And so I'm all in favor of building the bathrooms. I mean, they're getting torched every other week last summer, not this year. So we need to fix that. But I think that I, on this one, I kind of agree with Glenn, that maybe we need to plan a little bit better. If it takes a little bit longer, it will get done. It's just not right now.
Other input as part of the public hearing? If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Come on.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? Now we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. The action item then would be the resolution that would adopt the tax abatement, would adhere to the wishes of the council.
You know, after listening to Glenn and Steve, I myself am not a veteran, but I will pick on my father, who was a veteran, and he wants to lower taxes over another memorial. Like he says, there's one in Independence Park. And I'm very supportive of our veterans, but taxes are also a big issue for them. You know, I just think of the gentleman we saw on KAR 11 TV last couple days ago. He was trying to sell his hearing aids to buy a car. He's a veteran that probably would want lower taxes. I would be willing to make a motion that we bond for, and I will make a motion that we bond for the bathroom, but we work, and Preston, you're wonderful at getting donations. I've seen you do it. You like to wring money out of people, and I like that. But that we bond for the bathrooms this year and work on donations, or just bond for the bathrooms and have Preston work on donations.
I would second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion? Kyle, I would give you a few minutes to rephrase or re-enter the alternate motion.
Thank you, Preston, for all the work. You wring money out of people. I like that.
Keep doing it, Glenn.
Okay, so you have to substitute motion on table. That's in agreement with the motion maker and seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion?
So what is our, what is our plan then as a council moving forward if we're not going to get behind the project on Memorial Park financially? Are we, are we going to try and help Preston and Mr. Clath and the Fire Department and the other people that are involved in promoting this, to continue to push forward to get that project complete? It's at a point in time, you know, we can, and I think $85,000's a pretty nice donation. I know that there's been some other securities made, you know, promises made to Mr. Clath and some other efforts, but I think that we really need to get behind this and push it, and I also agree that we need to keep a line on our taxes and keep these, you know, bond levies as low as we can. But, you know, at a point in time, we still invest, and I think that one of the biggest things that we got when we did, and I'm a little bit prejudiced about Memorial Park, but that's been a huge plus for the city. And I think it's been a huge plus for our front door. I think completing it out, if you didn't know there was a Phase 3 coming, I don't think anybody complains that the park is the way it is, because it's kept. It's one of the only parks that that's push mode. You know, I mean, there's a lot of pride there. push mode. You know, I mean, there's a lot of pride there. That is the front door to the city. And I really struggle to not vote no on the alternative motion in order to push this to a second motion to go and try to push this through. But I, I also understand that the dance we're playing right now to try to get our bonding and our debts in line. But if we're not going to, if we're not going to support this financially, we damn well better get behind this thing and support it principally and work to help raise those funds privately. And if we can't, I hope that we're open to come back to the table and finish this.
I think the one additional comment I would make, if we recall back to the presentation that was made at budget time by Chief Clay, the, there's a certain level of base funding that, that needs to be done for the project to have that foundation that then will allow people to be interested in making that additional investment. It's like, well, no one wants to invest in the bathroom, but they do want to invest in the final product.
Yep.
John?
And, you know, it always kind of gets me a little curious. We're, we don't want to pay it in taxes, but we're willing to pay it as a donation. And, you know, that's a slippery slope because you're now saying, well, okay, I don't want to pay taxes, but I will pay for the street. Or I don't want to pay for that, but I would have paid for this. You know, it's coming out of the same pocket. To me, yeah, I intend to vote no on this because I think we need to go back to the original motion. I think the city needs to have some skin in the game on this thing and be part of Memorial Park itself.
Other discussion on the motion?
I think the city has a lot of skin in the game already. We've invested a ton of money in that park. It's not like we've been skimping on, on that park. And there's a difference between taxes and donations. Donations are voluntary. If people feel it's a worthwhile cause, they can go on and donate money to it. Taxes are involuntary. They're mandatory. You have to pay whether you want to or not. And if there are individuals in our community that feel like this is a worthwhile project, then they certainly can donate money towards it. And, you know, certain things are more related to taxes, like streets and so forth, where we all benefit from it and we can all see the use out of it. A lot of times the memorials, they come from, from donations. And what we're saying here is, let's give the donations a chance. And like I said, the amount of money they plan on spending, that's a huge amount of money on that park. And we've already spent a huge amount of money. So I think it's a very fair proposal that's, that's being offered here.
I agree with you, Craig, that we need to get wholeheartedly behind it. And I think we, as a council, need to get behind it. And part of this is of community pride to say, this was raised by donations. That, that we as citizens, like you brought the beam home. You're proud of that. Whereas we as citizens can say, you know, yes, maybe Preston led the charge, but we as citizens raised the money to build this memorial to our soldiers. We didn't force anybody to pay for it that didn't want to. I do agree, we work on this for a year. If something comes up, the city can take a look back at it again. But I think at the end of the day, it'll be, it'd be a prouder point if we have a plaque in there, this was wholly raised by donations of the citizens of Marshall. And that puts, that makes, shows your community is very proud, you know, proud of their veterans.
Mr. Mayor, and I apologize because normally I won't make this comment unless I'm pretty darn solid that I have the numbers in place, and I just don't. It took nine years to get phase two put into place as we rode through. And, and there were a lot of people that worked really hard, and there were a lot of people that dug in. There was a lot of in-kind. But I want to talk a little bit about the price tag of that piece of property because the vast majority of the money that went into that piece of property, as I recall, had nothing to do with making it a park. It had to do with raising a substantial amount of downtown blight. And it was also a brownfield, okay? That was a dirty site when the city took it over. And they cleaned it up because it wasn't affordable or, or practical for any private entity to do that. And that is what the community, that is what government is for, is to do things for the good of the whole. Now, when that piece of property sat there, there were some visionary people that had a couple of different paths, but pretty similar in an outcome to make a city park out of that, to make that part of the plaza plan for downtown Marshall for that look. And the beam became an opportunity to kind of change the focus and make it the Memorial Park. And there were a lot of things got behind it. So when you look at the price tag, don't just look at the finished product. Go back a little bit, take some aerial photos up and look at what that site looked like in the past and know that the city did the community a huge favor by cleaning that up and making it something that we can be proud of other than something we avoid.
Okay, other discussion on the motion?
I just want to clarify the motion, that the motion should somehow include adopting the resolution that's going to be revised per the intent of the council to just include Justice Park. So we'll have to revise the parcels and some of the language, but the resolution needs to be adopted as part of the motion.
But everyone understands the intent of the motion? If that's the case, I'll move to a vote. And that motion does pass. Okay. So we will then move on then to agenda item number eight. Agenda item number eight is the street reconstruction bonding. Once again, we'll have a public hearing. Following the public hearing, we'll consider a resolution. Terry? Sharon, do you want to say anything on this one?
Uh, no.
Well, then, go ahead, Terry.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, you'll be glad that this is short and sweet. You've had the street reconstruction plan in advance. And again, this is an approval in order to issue this type of a bond. And if we can go to the next slide, the criteria is that you would hold a public hearing approving the street reconstruction plan that's been distributed. And it's, you advertised it 10 to 28 days beforehand, which you complied with. And there is a 30-day reverse referendum if folks didn't agree with what is in the plan. There is a, if we go to the next slide, please, there is a five-year plan that looks like this, very exciting with bright colors. And the one item that is asterisk, it's about this six-line item down, a little difficult to see on the purple screen, but it's the street overlay of 350,000. And that, in addition to approving the overall plan, we're asking you that, that the, you approve in this resolution the ability to bond using street reconstruction for that item because there aren't assessments or other, anything that would qualify as a regular 429 assessment bond. So we're pulling this one out as a street reconstruction.
Questions for Terry? Is there, is there any input as part of the public hearing? John?
Just a comment that kind of flashed through on the other one. This is what's referred to as a 475 bond, I believe is what we've been calling it. And the reason it's a 475 rather than a 429, which doesn't have the 30-day reverse referendum, is because the assessments on this are less than 20%. So it does not qualify. So just keep that in mind when you, we get at a later date, different council meeting, we talk about assessments.
Other input as part of the public hearing? Noted, sir? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion by David, seconded by Craig. Discussion? Not will move to a vote. Motion passes. So then you have the resolution before you?
I'll move adoption of the resolution.
I'll second. Motion by David, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, will move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number nine. Agenda item number nine, this is also a public hearing. I believe this is our last public hearing of the evening.
Darn it, I was just getting used to it.
So this is a public hearing on the CIP.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. This is the triple crown for this bond issue. This is the capital improvement plan, plan portion, which is a specific statute that would finance the projects that we're talking about, which are two. And they are the Justice Park, oh, excuse me, I'm on the wrong one. It's going to be the fire station parking lot mill and overlay and the street department parking lot reconstruct. Again, the authority for this is very similar to the street reconstruction bonds. There is an addition on the last bullet that it's limited to 0.12% of market value. You also have to meet that cap for all of your capital improvement plans throughout the city. The next page illustrates that calculation, starting with your market value, the stated maximum using, I said 0.12, it should be 0.16, I'm sorry, coming to 1,053,300. Your estimated maximum debt service that we calculate with all of this. And so you've got several, a lot of unused capacity, even though you've got a lot of debt, is what you're, I'm hearing from you. You're not, you don't have very much capital improvement plan bonding at all. And so this, you've got plenty of capacity there. And then the last page is what's in the five-year CIP. And this one isn't brilliantly colored because there aren't very many items in it. It's only, all fits on one page. So the first two items are the items I mentioned earlier that are part of the 2018 expenditure. Nothing for 2019, a street shop addition in 2020. And there's a holding spot for a city hall in 2022. And that is all that's in your CIP portion of your overall capital improvement plan.
Are there any comments or input as far, for the public hearing on the capital improvement plan? Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and councilmen, there's a slight change for the council to consider. If you don't want to go forward with it, that's up to you. But we did have Fire Chief Brunzold and Assistant Engineer Jason Anderson look at the parking lot to do some further analysis on it. An option would be to do a seal coat chip method versus doing a mill and overlay. They would work on some of the drainage outlets and do some milling around that to get better drainage. Would bring the cost down where we think we can manage it by utilizing reserves. The concrete driveway approaches was something that's still recommended. That's, that'll be paid for via a different method, and it's separate from the CIP. And we apologize for not having this earlier, but we didn't also want to make the change without your consent, if you thought that was appropriate or not. So that's a change that you could consider here tonight. The resolution is to have both the street parking lot and, and for the fire station, but you can revise the resolution if you wish.
So the option that you're throwing on the table is to remove the 154, 260?
That's correct.
Jason, you're in agreement with that?
That would be an option if the council chose to do. So we could extend the life and try to push the overlay out, maybe another seven or eight years. If we crack seal, chip seal, and then, as Sharon mentioned, also lower some of the inlets. There's a couple inches of adjustment. We can patch around, lower them, patch around them, crack seal, and then chip seal the whole lot. And that should hopefully delay it for another handful of years.
Question for Jason. So a mill and overlay would be something we'd need to consider seven to eight years from now?
Roughly. The parking lot's not that far away from needing something like that. But if you look at it, we probably could benefit from sealing and lowering those catch basins and hopefully buy a few more years. And we can probably get all that work done for less than $25,000. We haven't put pen to paper, but chip seal it for sure for $8,000. And then we haven't gotten estimates on crack sealing and re-striping and lowering the catch basins, but.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
I have a question. Why would we redo the street department parking lot and two years later put on a $750,000 addition that's going to pile stuff on our new parking lot? Wouldn't we do those in reverse so that the shop is all done up and then we do the parking lot up to the new street shop? It just doesn't make sense to do the, the complete reconstruction of a parking lot that two years later add on to a building where we may have to add on to that parking lot?
Yeah, I understand that concern. Unfortunately, I'm not intimately familiar with that project. That'd be a better one for Glenn Olson, but.
I think the proposed addition to the street department is towards that area, towards, what is that street? By the water tower there?
Cassoot?
Oak Street. And, and there's not a parking lot there right now.
Correct.
That's that gravel area.
But by redoing the parking lot, we limit our options to, when we do, if we're going to do the addition, to me, we now have limited our, our options. To me, I would reverse it or do it all at one time.
I can't say that whatever improvements we put into the lot, we'll definitely be cognizant of what we're trying to do later for what that's worth.
Want to build a parking lot and then rip it up?
Well, you know, and I'm not, and that could happen. We've seen it happen. To me, it's, we're doing it backwards. We're putting the cart before the horse.
Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and councilmen, there's definitely discussion on the size of the parking lot and that likely the current size would not be what's going to be redone or put back in place. It'll likely be different than what it is now. And the staff would take into consideration any future street shop addition. Might have to trust us on it, though.
So there's no, there's no plan for this parking lot yet, per se?
We haven't done the design work for it.
Shouldn't we have the design and see what the structure is before we approve?
We have a general idea of what we would hope to do, but we have not put, we haven't completed the design.
Okay, other input as part of the public hearing?
Parking lot is in poor, poor condition.
John?
If we would add this in later, that would be a different bond issue and the whole works. We'd have some added expense in that. So if we approve this at this point and then determine it isn't necessary, we haven't lost money. We haven't paid extra money. So it doesn't mean that we have to spend it if we approve it.
We can always bring forward any plans to the council for review as well at a later date.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
I have a question for Terry on this. So if we move ahead with the, with the bonds for the, for the street department parking lot reconstruction, and we don't do it right away, are we, are we putting those funds in peril?
If you approved the money for this project, there is an 18-month period that you have to spend, spend it. So if you wanted to visit the plan. And the other thing that you can do is if you decide you don't need it, you can reduce the next time you're going to issue a bond issue, if it's for a similar type and we include it, we could reduce the cash on hand for a similar project, since you have the authority or, and we'll make sure, you know, with that in mind, make sure that the bond resolution is vague, a little bit more vague in how they describe it. And the other thing you can do, always do, is if you have funds like that, you can put it in the debt service fund and not levy. So it can always get transferred to debt service and reduce your levy if you have extra cash.
Thank you.
Any other input as part of the public hearing?
In the capital improvement plan here, there's $100,000 for the bike trail and sidewalks. Is that part of this project then, too? Does it have anything to do with what we're doing here?
It's not going to be part of bonding.
No, the, you're approving the entire plan, but, but the only thing that's being approved for bonding are the first two items, subject to how you might make your decision tonight. The first two for 2018 are the only ones that are separately called out and included in this bond issue.
Quite true. Just the general.
We are approving the, the plan and the issuance of bonds. There's two things that are happening here, right?
This is, gives you, when you have the hearing and you approve the issuance of bonds, you're calling out a maximum of this type of bond that you might approve. The last item, the one following the third hearing, is the actual authorization of the bonds. And we would adjust that downward if you wanted to pull any of the projects. I think on these individual ones, to go ahead and authorize those items in the plan, doesn't require you to bond for them, it gives you the option, too.
But there are two things that are happening. You're, you're approving the plan and the issuance of bonds. That's part of the motion.
That is correct.
Right.
When we get to that point, after the public hearing?
Right. The resolution approves the plan and it authorizes you to issue so many, up to this dollar amount of this type of bonds. The actual authorization of bonds is the last item.
Okay, other input as part of the public hearing? Noted, sir? Motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Seconded. Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, will move to a vote. Motion passes. So then the resolution that would... So then the resolution that would approve the capital improvement plan and issuing, issuance of bonds, recognizing the staff recommendation that the amount of the fire department parking lot project, which was roughly 154,000, that that would be reduced from the resolution. Is that the wishes of the council?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion?
My only concern again is on the parking lot is I think that we're, we're doing it backwards, that we should have this building designed with the parking lot and bond for the whole project at that time. We're only looking at two years and they're looking at a street shop addition in our capital improvement plan. But to me, I think we'd get a more favorable price if it was bid all as one package, too. Because then you'd bid it all as parking lot, correct? You'd bid this all as one package and.
Potentially.
And I think we'd get a more favorable price. I, I think it should be put together as, as one project and bond it that way.
I'm skeptical of the timing of the shop addition, and I fear that it could be prolonged. And, and the parking lot is in need of repair. And I, I know it's in the plan, but, but we've already moved some things back. I anticipate items in the CIP beyond 2018 to be pushed back, and I see the street shop addition. I don't know if that date is achievable for the city.
It's also possible that the city hall project could be accelerated and maybe.
Accelerated, it could be moved back. So I, I think the street shop, and I'm not trying to predict what the council's going to do. I worry about that being pushed back and then we're left with a parking lot that's, that's not in good condition. I mean, it's, it's deteriorating quite, quite a lot, and I'm not an engineer, but it's in need of repair.
Other discussion on the motion?
The, tonight we, we removed $90,000 from the one bond, did we not? The abatement bond of 210. So actually the amount that, if you reduced it by 90,000, it would be 3,725,000. Would it, would it be without that 90,000 in it? Am I correct?
Okay. Other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 10. Agenda item number 10, consider the adoption of the resolution providing the issuance of the series 2018A bonding. Terry for the, your last presentation this evening?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, this is kind of anticlimactic. You've got a lot of information about a big chunk of this already. The total bond issue includes, the other pieces are improvement bonds that, that do meet the 20% criteria, and there's an airport bond that, that pays for improvements at the airport that's been discussed in the recommendation, and a small portion that's utility bonds that are approved based on that authority. And when you put the whole thing together, the total amount of bonds is 3,815,000. And I think I heard you earlier this evening that you would be removing from the abatement bonds, that would be reduced to about $130,000 issue from 210,000, and the capital improvement bonds pulling out the parking lot would be reduced from 465,000 down to 310. And roughly, we'll have our staff rerun it by pulling out the projects, but to give you an idea, that looks like you'll be issuing about a $3,585,000 bond with those not in instead of 3,815,000. And unless there's any other questions on those projects, that's our recommendation to go forward and sell the bonds on your behalf. The date of the sale would be on June 25th. We would sell those at 10 o'clock in the morning and then report to you at 5:30 that afternoon for final approval, and hopefully with the best rates we can get you on that day.
Thank you, Jerry. Questions?
Just want to make clear on this. So the $465,000 capital improvement bonding, that includes reconstructing the street department parking lot that you were talking about, right?
It does, yes.
I just want to be clear on that.
Other questions? If not, I entertain a motion.
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by David. Discussion?
You know, we lower our bond and the media's even here to report on it.
That's all right. We'll tell them.
See that?
Other discussion on the motion?
We're on TV, by the way, you know, so we're, we've already got a lot of viewers.
I just want to be clear that you moved the resolution so that we're doing what you're asking us to do. You want us to move the resolution with amending it by pulling out the two projects that were outlined earlier?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify that we're removing the fire station, parking lot building overlay as well as the memorial park.
Thank you, Terry.
Other discussion on the motion?
I, I have a question. Okay. So of the $465,000, did you just say that we're removing the street department project or not? Is it?
No.
It's in here?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
The, oh, I didn't know if you're calling on me or Sharon. The two, the two items that I have down that are going to be removed from the recommendation that you have would be the, the fire station, the, the 154, 264 item that would come out, and the other is the memorial park, and that's an $80,000 project net of the grants and the private donations. And we would just take those out and give you the new numbers.
Okay, other, we have a motion on the table, correct? Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Agenda item number 11 is the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the consent agenda on the screen. They include consider the approval of temporary on sale and Tuscan liquor license for Marshall Chamber of Commerce for July 11, 2018. Consider the approval temporary on sale in Tuscan liquor license for Marshall Chamber of Commerce for August 15, 2018. Consider the approval of temporary 3.2% malt liquor licenses for the Marshall Baseball Association. Considering the application for the exempt permit for Pride and Tiger Foundation for an event to be held July 16. Consider the authorization to declare bikes as surplus property for the police department. Consider the authorization to declare vehicles as surplus property for the police department. Consider the request for street closure for Reinhard Food Service for Truck Rodeo Event Saturday, June 9, 2018. The West Redwood, West Marshall, 500-block alley improvement project. Consider the resolution declaring the adequacy of the petition and ordering the preparation of the report. Consider the request of the Lyon County Historical Society for installation of historical walking mark, tour markers. Consider the request of Daily Grind for private use of public rights away at 316 West Main Street. Consider calling for a public hearing on the MS4 permit program and the summary. And finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes separate discussion? Craig, first you.
19, please.
19?
18.
18?
17.
21.
Forward, midnight.
So I would entertain a motion on the items remaining on the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, so that motion passes.
Looks like you're gone already, David.
Agenda item number, what was 17, now is 21. John?
Yeah, at the last meeting, we graciously agreed to perhaps donate three vehicles to There's a couple of things here provided, everything is clear and it's acceptable to still donate three vehicles. I would like, make the request that instead of the Suburban that was on the last meeting, to swap that out with the Ford that's on the list this week, and you guys can scrap out the Suburban since it has a blown engine. Be pretty expensive to repair and probably has more scrap value to it than what the little Ford that's out there. And the Ford does run, so just be declaring both vehicles as surplus and continuing with that, but I'd like to see if, if everything is possible that Ucap can get the three vehicles, that the Ford gets swapped with the Suburban.
Oh, absolutely. All we do is declaration of.
I'll just, I think really the motion is that these are declared as, as surplus, and then we handle it beyond that.
Yes.
Clear on that?
Yes.
And just as kind of a side note, I have, again, talked with Ucap on this, like to try to get this a little bit more of a win-win for the city and for Ucap that I realize that there's city expenses involved in getting these vehicles, holding them for the 45 days and everything else, or quite a bit on what happens to vehicles, but to see if there's some way that some of that could be mitigated with Ucap and try to reduce the expenses. It's never going to be a break even, which it never has been, but like to do that, so. I guess in this case, proceed and just say motion to declare the vehicles as surplus property.
You made that motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Motion made by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. What was agenda item number 18 is now agenda item number 21. This is request re-closure for Reinhard Food Service for a company truck rodeo event. Jim, go ahead.
I'm assuming that we didn't work something out for them to use the Merritt Center?
No.
I, I will support them again this year, but I would strongly push them that way. I know next year I will not support them to close that street again.
I would encourage you to make that part of the resolution because they were, my, our initial response was they liked it, the Merritt a lot. They had an issue with the, they do forklifts and that, and basically, beyond an initial thing that we like it, we'll get back and have it returned calls or emails. And so I think if you state that as.
I will make it a motion that we support this issue, but next year that they need to do it at the Merritt Center.
I'll second that.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Craig. Discussion?
I, I, you know, for years we've consented to their request for street closure, and it's never been a problem in the past, has it?
Not substantial. It is a fairly major crossroads, and one of the comments the safety manager made was he did have several vehicles that drove through the barricades and drove onto the site. So, I mean, we, yeah, so we, it, he conceded that it wasn't, I mean, no one was hurt, no one was threatened by it, but they did have cars just drive through the barricades and go into their event. And it's a moderately busy crossing, especially if there's Main Street blocked, but I think the appeal is apparently forklifts and they've got their corporate office there, and it's, they can invite out-of-town employees and that there, but.
I think there's plenty of time before next year that you can have a conversation with them, want to work out something that.
Yes.
They find acceptable, too, and so.
We do, but, but like Rob said, that is, that is a through street, and there are businesses that are open on the other end of that street, so.
And if you're living where I live and you're trying to get over there, it, it is pretty inconvenient because it, it just, it's just not that handy to go around.
Okay, so you made the motion. Craig, seconded. Other discussion on the motion?
Well, we close streets for crazy days and other events, too. So it's, it's not unusual to close streets for certain events. We close them for parades and things like that. It's almost like we're forcing them to use the Merritt Center whether they want to or not. And I don't think we should be forcing them to use it if they don't want to.
But we built that facility for this reason, and I, and I think that facility for what they're doing is a much better facility. Crazy days, you can't move everybody downtown to the Merritt Center. We have a facility for that purpose, and I think that's a good use of that facility. They're practicing how to drive a truck, and you should do that at the Merritt Center, not on a public road.
Other discussion on the motion? We'll move to a vote.
Just one question. So the exact wording of the motion?
I think the, I think the intent of the motion, and if I'm going to speak for, as the seconder on this, is that the conversation with them about the desire, the preference of having them use the Merritt Center is pretty clear. I don't think we have to put it in the motion. I think our statement's.
That, that is the intent of the motion, correct?
Thank you.
So, so am I correct that the motion basically is to allow the request?
Yes.
Yes, the motion always was to allow the request this year, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we'll still move to a vote. And that motion does pass. Agenda item number 22, which was agenda item number 19, this is the alley improvement project. Craig, are you just want to abstain here?
I want to abstain, yes.
Okay. So I would entertain.
I created the petition.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Motion by John, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
I was wondering if somebody could explain exactly what's all going to be done with this project, and have we heard from, it tells us that we had the 35% of the property owners. Have we heard from the remainder of the property owners?
We have 75%, 75% of the frontage on the petition, and the project would be an improvement of the surfacing in the alley.
And what's the, what was the cost again on that?
We have not put together a cost estimate at this time, but I would say between $16,000 and $34,000, depending on whether we use bituminous or concrete surfacing.
And, and the way the, the resolution is worded here, we're just saying that the, the petition is adequate, that they have the required number of signatures, and we're ordering preparation of a report. It doesn't mean that we're heading forward with the project yet.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Discussion on the motion? We'll move to a vote. That motion does pass. Note the abstention. Then we did also, the next item that was removed from the consent agenda was agenda, was agenda item number 21. That will now be agenda item number 23. Consider the request of the Daily Grind for private use of public rights away. Glenn?
I was curious about that. I, I think in, in the agenda information we were provided, it, it indicated that prior council action at this location required the placement, so the council acted on this at a previous occasion?
In, I believe it was 1997.
That's correct.
Okay. And this has been enforced since then, that they've been able to use it, or is it, is expired?
To the best of my knowledge, the council never, never did revisit the topic. They may have, and maybe we missed it in minutes, but.
There's.
I think they decided to stop doing it at that time. The business did under their own accord.
I, I did a search and I couldn't find anything as far as council action, and that's what I was wondering about. And so there's no concern from the other businesses there that it's going to obstruct traffic to their business, or?
At this, at this time, they're just talking about putting it out in front of their own business, and if they maintain that six feet of access, then we're saying as a monitors of the right of way that they're not obstructing the path.
And, and, and the way. And the way that the motion evidently is worded here, that they, as long as they keep it out of the public right of way?
They'll be in the right of way, but the pedestrian, yeah, the pedestrian access route, if they stay out of that pedestrian route, that's six feet off of the building, and then if they also stay at least three feet behind the curb so the car doors can open, then we feel like it would be potentially adequate, and that's why we brought it forward for you to review.
The, I guess my concern, too, is here is that it talks about a private use of public right of way for the placement of tables and chairs. It doesn't mention the three feet and the six feet requirement, and is that, is that something that needs to be part of the actual motion?
It probably should be part of the motion.
And I would entertain a motion.
I so move.
Three feet, six feet?
Yep, three feet, six feet.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion?
And I just, just to, and Glenn, I appreciate the question or the request for the clarification. That's exactly what we talked about at the committee meeting, commission meeting, so that those right of ways were very clear, and I believe that this actually gets a permit then?
Yeah, we have a permit for these types of uses, and the Public Works Director can actually issue them without council interaction, but we thought it was prudent with this type of permit application to bring it forward.
Sure, and those conditions are spelled out in that permit also, the expectations of setbacks.
Correct.
So even though it wouldn't have been in the resolution, it would have been in the permit.
That's correct.
Yep, thank you.
I guess I have one last question on this, then. Is it five-year intervals, or is this permanent then?
I would suggest that it be permanent because we have the right to revoke it at any time, so I would just, I would say that you don't need to put intervals on it unless you chose to do so.
Other discussion? Now we'll move to a vote.
Looks like the cruise control went and we hit the ditch. Glenn, did you vote yes?
I didn't vote.
I didn't vote either.
Nobody voted.
I voted.
Glenn, did you vote?
I voted.
I didn't get to vote.
Glenn voted yes.
I didn't vote.
Oh, Glenn voted yes, so we all voted yes.
Well, let's vote again.
Yeah, let's try this again. It's like my football coach used to say, you just keep running that play till you get it right. There we go. Hey, looks just like you.
Okay, that motion passes. Agenda item number 24. Agenda item number 24, consider and approve, consider the approval of the planned unit development agreement between the City of Marshall and Unique Properties LLC. And again, once again, this was recommended by the planning commission. They recommended its approval. Is there anything you want to add?
There have been amendments made to the document from its preliminary introduction two weeks ago until now. Those amendments have occurred based upon zoning department review and review by the developers. You know, this just kind of sets up a little island development in and of themselves, the location, they, it's a planning zoning mechanism used for these types of developments. We have several planned unit developments in the city, not a lot, but seems appropriate here. This will be recorded in the courthouse, and it is, like all the other documents related to this project, kind of a living, breathing document. We have to prepare access easements, ingress egress, mutual maintenance agreement regarding the pond, maintenance of the pond utilities, the green space areas, shared use pond agreements, so there are more documents coming, but this forms the basis of the overall development of the project.
Questions for Dennis? Now she have the recommendation before you.
I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Motion by John, seconded by Craig, to approve the planned unit development agreement between the City of Marshall's and Unique Properties LLC. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. We'll note one abstention. Agenda item number 25. Agenda item number 25. Tom, we're glad you stuck around, so. Consider the request of the YMCA for a conditional use permit for a community garden at 200 South East Street. The applicant is here, the director of the YMCA, but Jason, I'll let you introduce this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The YMCA would like a conditional use permit to place a garden in front of the pool area on the south side of the building for their summer children's program. Conditional use permits required for community gardens in all zoning districts. A public hearing was held at the May 9 planning commission meeting. After some conversation, the planning commission motion to recommend approval of the conditional use permit with conditions limiting the size of the garden to 1,200 square feet maximum and requiring that the garden be properly maintained.
Glenn, you were at the planning commission, made a recommendation for the public under square feet?
Yeah. I think one of the main concerns I had about the garden is that it be well-maintained, and I think there are some other gardens in town, public gardens, where they're not well-maintained, and I think the property owners in that area were concerned that it devalues their property if it's not going to be adequately maintained. And as I understand, it's a garden that's going to be a project for young people at the YMCA, and they just wanted to make sure that if the, if the young children that are planting the garden and hopefully maintaining it do a good job of it, and if they don't, that the city, that the YMCA staff would step in and make sure everything was maintained, that it was weeded, and at harvest time that, you know, all of the plants would be removed and so forth.
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. That's correct. It's truly not a community garden. It will be a program garden. We have, you know, 80, 90 kids there after school programs, summer day camps, so it'll be their garden, run by YMCA staff, taken care of by the kids, very small, and it's really about education, letting them plant and grow and sample foods and making some foods out of those gardens, sending things home with some kids, so very, very simple garden that will be maintained.
Good. Thank you. I would entertain a motion.
I so move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 26. Agenda item number 26, consider requests of Marshall Downtown Business Association for Crazy Days Thursday, July 28, July 19, 2018. Is there a motion?
So move.
Motion by John?
Second.
Seconded by David. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Motion passes. Agenda item number 27. Commission board liaison reports in light of the length of this meeting, I'm going to pass on mine, Craig.
Same.
Steve?
Same.
Glenn?
Sam.
And John?
Ah, don't give a... Was not able to attend the MMU meeting. I was at the Governor's Task Force on Housing Forum in Sleepy Eye instead, and there was four Marshall individuals that attended that meeting, so it was good representation and good discussion. Also, I had an EDA meeting. We were not able to have a quorum, but that turned out to be okay because there was no action needed at that meeting. It was all informational, and we do have a meeting tomorrow at noon at the chamber office. That's it.
David?
Mine have not met.
And Jim?
I have nothing to report.
We'll move then to agenda item number 28. Councilmember individual items. Craig?
Pass.
Steve?
Pass for now.
Glenn?
I'll pass.
Jim?
You know, I didn't talk for two hours of this.
Just pass.
I just want to comment, I think it was a good discussion. It's a very respectful discussion.
Thank you.
David?
Very quickly, I've had an opportunity to represent city and municipal issues a couple of times recently, Coalition Greater Minnesota Cities event in St. Paul last week, and Senator Dames kindly invited me to a fishing opener event he hosted up at Green Lake and had a chance to talk with legislators about both quarters of commerce and wastewater bonds, and both are covered pretty nicely in the bonding bill, and we'll see what the governor does with that. PI and team met last week, and you had a couple of items that you just discussed on that, and a couple of staffers from Senator Tina Smith's office were holding a sort of a town hall event at the library last week, went by just to say hello on behalf of the city, and they had a suggestion for something they might be able, we might be able to help them with, so we'll follow up on that. Thank you.
And John?
Just one item, if anybody's tried to take a walk around the Minnesota Pond by the Redman Arena, probably find out that the sidewalk gets pretty slick from flock of geese that decide to fertilize the sidewalk instead of the lawn. Just a question out to anyone that's connected to the golf course, and maybe Doc, you might know the answer to that. Notice that out on the golf course, they've got little coyote silhouettes out there, and I'm assuming that's probably to help get rid of the geese, and is it useful? Maybe would want to try that.
I just asked them, they said they work unbelievably.
I think it might be worth a try to get some coyote silhouettes out on the trail out there.
Goslings are so cute.
The only thing out there, they pick up the balls and run down the perimeter.
Coyotes or the, or the ducks?
Goose does it. It helps me.
If you can train them to go towards the hole, okay.
Every time I lose a ball, it's a doggone coyote.
So with the, Sharon, let's bring that to attention of our park staff or public waste staff, but yeah, John, that is a huge nuisance, and it's only going to get worse if we don't...
I have to say, I can't take credit for the idea it was suggested to me.
But it's also a safety thing, because when those geese have goslings, they will attack you.
Exactly, yeah.
And it doesn't matter if you're on your bike and going 30, they'll fly after you.
30 going through that on your bike, you're going to crash.
So the, anything else, John? I would just mention two things, actually three. One is that there is the open house event tomorrow, business during hours at the Merritt Center. The Merritt Center also was the recipient of $3.1 million funding in the bonding bill, and David, it had to be signed, but quite a good step there, so. And then the final thing I'd say is, you know, it's been a long evening, but earlier this evening, the council met at 3:30 this afternoon for a very, I thought, enlightening presentation by the head of our gang and drug task force, and probably many of us may not have the understanding and then the appreciation of really the serious issues that they're dealing with in terms of drugs and that type of thing, so, and the very good work that they're also doing, but they're also really dealing with very serious, serious issues, and, you know, as we kind of go about our normal day, and then we may not be aware of that, but certainly there is lots of concern that people are dealing with and that our, that our law enforcement then have to deal with the consequences of, so. Very interesting to us, Sharon. Thank you for setting that up with law enforcement. Move on then to staff reports, Sharon.
In the essence of time, no report, Mr. Mayor.
Jason?
Same.
Just a few, Cal.
Well, thanks, half hour.
So then we will move then to agenda item 32, the pending agenda items. Any questions about the pending agenda items? Agenda item number 33, the information items. Note the building permit for Aldi Foods is listed in there, construction, Jason, I believe, has started on that, so.
Demo work, yep.
Right. And agenda item number 34 is the upcoming meetings, and finally, agenda item number 35.
So move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim, to adjourn this meeting. Discussion? We'll move to a vote.
Meister, did you vote no?
Damn.
You slipped it on me, I know.
Glenn, you're not going to discuss this, are you?
Nicely played.
The motion passes. We adjourn.